Edward Hawkins, Matthew Furness, Richard Hampson. Are there any others, please? I'd like to welcome back Marissa Heath as well. Welcome back. Members, in line with our guidance on the use of social media, I am happy for anyone attending today's meeting, including members of the council, to use social media provided this does not disturb the meeting business. That was good timing, wasn't it? I would like to remind you that this meeting is being webcast live, although I have the right to suspend filming if the need arises. Item two, minutes. May I sign the minutes of the council, held on 9th October 2018, as a correct record of the meeting? Item three, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of disclosable pecuniary interests, significant personal interests, or prejudicial interests that members wish to make at this point? And I'll just point out that I'm not requiring members to make any declaration about matters appearing on their current register of interest as a personal interest. Thank you. Moving to item four, my announcements. It was wonderful to see so many of you attend Richard Wilson's funeral last Tuesday. He was a dedicated councillor, friend, and a true gentleman. Naturally, we've had the most amazing weekend of remembrance services throughout the county. And again, I think our servicemen from 100 years ago deserve our recognition and deserve the recognition they got. You'll be receiving an email from me shortly with details and a nomination form for you to nominate a volunteer you feel has been made who has made an outstanding contribution to the area. And I would really like each of you to nominate at least one person. Please try and do it if you can. And things to consider include whether their activities have benefited the local community, have their activities focused on creating, participating in, or holding an event, or planning or delivering some local activity. Thank you. Now I'll move on to item five, the leader's statement. I call the leader to make his statement. And as you know, members can make comments as well as asking one question each after the leader has made his statement. I call the leader.
Mr. Chairman and members. Last week, I advised my Conservative colleagues that I would stand down as leader of this council on 11th of December and pass the baton on to somebody new. Over the last decade, local government has gone through some of the most extraordinary and challenging times. We have achieved a great deal over the past 10 years. Despite these difficulties, and I feel with the county firmly set on an exciting new vision for the future, now is the right time for me to stand aside. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reflect this morning on the many benefits that we have delivered for Surrey. When I became deputy leader in 2009, the country had just experienced the crash of the financial markets across the world. And the consequence of that crash quickly hit local government. Since then, a staggering £16 billion has been cut from local government funding nationally, with over £230 million cut from services for Surrey residents. On top of that, this Conservative administration has reduced the costs to our taxpayers by £540 million over the last eight years. And we are on target to achieve a further £106 million this year. This is an extraordinary achievement in difficult times. But we kept going thanks to the tough decisions we've made, always having residents at the centre of our thinking. It was clear to me back then that we needed to transform our services and reduce our costs. I launched a public value review of every single department and service with terrific support from officers across the council. We found £287 million of savings by doing things differently. The lessons of the last 10 years in local government is that while we are focused on improving efficiencies for serving Surrey services, despite the increasing demands of children and adult social care, our task has been made continually more difficult for us by circumstances beyond our control. In 2011, the government decreed that the National Health Service should hand over responsibilities for severe learning disabilities to local government. Surrey County Council received over 860 individual cases. And the NHS passed over £65 million of annual funding with promises of inflation funding to follow. It's extremely disappointing that the government has not only failed to do that but has also completely eroded that funding. So today, we no longer receive a single penny. It means that Surrey council taxpayers have been left to fund this vital service for vulnerable residents. Similarly, the government in 2013 decided to hand responsibility for public health back to councils. But the annual funding was immediately cut by more than £14 million to this council. It is sometimes difficult for anyone involved in local government to accept that despite continually finding efficiencies and savings, continually weathering the cuts to funding, and continually facing increased demands for children and adult services, that councils are expected to carry on regardless while the health service is handed more and more funding. In many ways, Mr. Chairman, I believe we have been victims of our own success. Nonetheless, we have worked hard with the health service to bring health and social care closer together. We've seen the emergence of Surrey Heartlands as a devolution partnership. But I remain concerned at the level of work and time commitment required to make a reality of a truly integrated system. I still have reservations about the tangible outcomes and whether this initiative really does support us in helping us to reduce the cost for adult social care services in Surrey. I totally support the principle of the government's 10-year funding plan for the NHS. But there needs to be a concurrent 10-year plan for adult social care. Without it, the health and social care system will one day be brought to a standstill. The challenges we have faced since 2009 have not always been financial. During December and January 2014, we witnessed some of the heaviest rainfall in Surrey which resulted in flooding to many homes in the county. The devastation caused to homes in Surrey was the highest recorded in UK. I must pay tribute to our previous chief executive, David McNulty, for his professionalism in handling this crisis. And since then, we have worked tirelessly with the Environment Agency to draw up a plan for much improved flood protection along the Thames and in other areas across Surrey. We now know that the Thames Scheme is nearly ready for sign-off by Her Majesty's Treasury. But there is still a funding gap of £257 million to resolve. Despite these challenges, there have been moments of great celebrations. In 2010, I was delighted to put Surrey forward as the site for the 2012 London Olympic cycling event. There were remarkable success thanks to all the hard work and commitment of so many at the county council. That Olympic legacy continues today with the annual London Surrey Cycling Events, which have raised considerable funds for national and local charities. On 22nd July 2013, the New Walton Bridge was opened between Walton and Shepperton. I'd like to pay a personal tribute to our previous leader, Nick Skellett, who was hugely instrumental in ensuring the delivery of a very much needed bridge between Shepperton and Walton. And then, Mr. Chairman, there was the event in 2015 to commemorate 800 anniversary of Magna Carta. Once again, the county delivered an outstanding event in partnership with Runnymede Borough Council. The world's eyes were on Surrey that day. And our offices, along with Surrey Police, the Royal Holloway College University, delivered events that we could be rightly proud of. The juror chairs will be a lasting legacy of this horrific event sitting on Runnymede Common. In addition, we will see the Eco Park open in the new year, providing the next generation of waste treatment facilities for Surrey households. And we've rebuilt fire stations, Mr. Chairman, in Guildford, in Woking, in Salford. And a new one will open soon in Portbridge, Mr. Evans. Woking Fire Saving was built with 31 flats above it. And I believe this is the future for all of our fire stations. These flats can provide much-needed accommodation to key public servants and young people in order they have a place that they can call home. Over the last 10 years, I've worked with the leaders and chief executors of the 11 boroughs and districts. I'm grateful for their personal support. As we develop our vision for Surrey 2030, I strongly believe they will play an important role in changing local government services throughout Surrey for all of our residents. In addition, we have supported the work of the local enterprise partnerships, the Enterprise M3 and Coaster Capital. This work has seen investment of over £50 million for the benefit of Surrey residents, including significant improvements to the Runnymede Roundabout, the Medis Gyratey, and the A22 Network Resilience Scheme. While our work to improve roads for our residents has continued, we launched Operation Horizon. And today, we can see the improvement it has made to many Surrey roads. We've also lobbied hard for fairer funding for Surrey roads. This work will continue. But I am pleased the government has begun to listen to us. And the Chancellor announced extra money in the budget for roads. We must continue to push Surrey to get its first share of the vehicle exercise duty raised in Surrey so that can be spent on Surrey roads. That's what I call fairness. To meet the financial challenges, we have had to be resourceful and courageous. In 2012, this council made a brave and historic decision in not accepting the government's offer of a council tax-free grant. We went against the majority in national and local government at that time. But that decision, that decision by this council has led to an extra £250 million since 2012 to help us supporting public services for Surrey residents. Mr. Chairman, I've long felt that the solution to our financial pressures will not be found in government. Yes, fairer funding by government ministers can help us. Yes, proper retention of business rates will make a difference, we hope. But at the end of the day, we must determine our own future. That was the reason why in 2013, I launched the long-term investment strategy to create an income stream of up to £10 million a year by 2020. And an assets and property strategy agreed by Cabinet last month has the potential to raise an extra £25 million a year by 2030. These initiatives are vital as we resolve the financial implications of the huge rise in the number of children with special education needs. I was able to persuade government... My apologies. We as corporate parents cannot fail these children in need. So we have set up plans to reform the services we offer to them and their families. We will be working with schools and the health service to deal with issues earlier on and closer to home. And, Mr. Chairman, I look to all members of this council to be champions for our children in need. But there is, of course, still more to do. It is with deep regret that Surrey failed its Children's Services Offset Inspection in 2015. I can honestly say, Mr. Chairman and members, that I am now confident that with the appointment of Dave Hill, Surrey is now in the hands of a Children's Services Specialist. And the changes he is making will bring better services for Surrey children. Thank you, David. But we will only be successful if we, members and officers, work together more effectively with our partners and day with us. We cannot change the world on our own. We'd love to try. Change will not happen overnight. And we are still perhaps two or three years away from where we believe Children's Services should be. Outside of Surrey, I was privileged to be elected to the chairmanship of the county council network and then leadership of the Conservative group at the LGA. In those roles, I was able to stand up and fight for change, often behind closed doors. Change which has benefited people in Surrey and nationally. I was able to persuade government to implement the fairer funding process before enacting the business rates reform. And to allow local authorities to raise the percep locally for adult social care. But first and foremost, it's been my role at Surrey that has always been my priority. I'm deeply thankful to everyone who's contributed and taken a role in my cabinet over the years. We've faced difficult times. We've made difficult decisions. But it's been hugely enjoyable and a satisfying role working to make Surrey a better place. In particular, I am very grateful to my deputies, Peter Martin, who has always been ready with a quiet piece of advice and support. Often, we would debate issues before we aired them, usually in Peter's office. He was a loyal and hard-working deputy. And under his stewardship, as military champion, the county council is one of the national leaders in the support and commitment to the military. And what could be more important today than for all of us to remember those who've gone before us and never, never forget those in uniform who are doing their best on our behalf? In the last 18 months, John has kindly stepped into that role of deputy leader. And I am grateful to you both. I have no doubt that the new leader and her cabinet, whoever they are, will go from strength to strength with the support of a great senior management team and professional officers across Surrey. And I thank all officers for the support they have given me over the years. I'm sure they're probably glad I'm going now so I don't have to pester them. Mr. Chairman, I've been privileged to serve with so many hard-working Conservative members of our group since 2009. And we've won three elections in that time. I thank them for their loyalty and dedication. And of course, I would like to say thank you to the opposition leaders and members who, when occasionally, I've traded exchanges with over the years. The very cornerstone of our democracy is the importance of different voices and challenges. But in a respectful way, I always believe, be respectful of the opposition. Our political views may differ. But one thing I believe that unites us all is our desire to do the very best for our residents. And when a member assumes the role of leader, it's critical never to lose sight of your own division. I'd like to say a genuine and sincere thank you to all my district councils in the Wallingham Division for their loyal support over the years. I'm also indebted to the parish council and the parish clerks who together do so much to improve the lives of local residents. I also like to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues on the Tannodich Local Committee for the support and sometimes even putting up with me. Not sure why. I must thank those who've worked in partnership to bring services to our residents, particularly the wonderful voluntary, the community and freight sector, who have been integral during my time as leader. And they are key to this council's long-term future. Ultimately, it has been an honour to serve the residents of Surrey as leader of the council. And I cannot think of any role that has brought me so much satisfaction despite the work and challenges and the loss of weekends. I firmly believe we have achieved great things in the face of adversity. And I am delighted that we have secured the best possible senior management team led by a truly outstanding chief executive, Joanna Killen. Thank you. Together, we have put the county on a course to a brighter vision in 2013. And a transformation plan that will bring lasting benefits for our residents. There is, of course, a positive side to standing down as leader. I would genuinely be able to spend more time with my wife, Anne, although she may not see that as positive. I'm wondering how long it'll be before she tells me to get out of the house and do something. But Anne has been a real inspiration to me in this role. I have no doubt without her support, her voice of wisdom, caution, her reasoning and understanding, this job would have been far more difficult. She is my rock. And it's always been there no matter what the issues or challenges. As we move into the next chapter of the history of the county council, I wanted to leave you with a simple proverb which I believe is relevant to us all. If you want to go far, go fast alone. But if you really want to go far, go together. And I would like members and officers and partners, all of us, to hold that proverb dear as we work towards a vision for Surrey in 2030. Finally, Mr. Chairman and members, can I personally thank you all for allowing me the privilege and honour to serve as the leader of this county council. It's been a real pleasure.
Thank you, leader. And also, I see Anne Hodge in the balcony. Great to see you, Anne. I think a round of applause you need to live with that, gentlemen. So, members, the item is now open for questions and comments. I've already had many indications. So let's lead off with John Fury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a little-known fact that David Hodge is challenging, occasionally. Often, he can be found to be right. But most of the time, he does it with a destination and an outcome that he's looking to achieve. He has served seven years in a senior position and as leader of this county. And he's done so on behalf of our residents. There has been no sense of anything other than residents has always been in the forefront of David's mind. He's represented us in Parliament. He's fought with MPs, often with no outcome other than a rebuttal. And that is not fair to happen to anybody. He's represented us on UK committees nationwide, county representative bodies, always on behalf of Surrey residents. He has delivered to this county a number of things that have affected and benefited our residents. And that should never be forgotten. His views, as I said, have not always been well-received. But he has always recognised the need and responded and spoke out, often suffering from downright rejection and rebuttal again. He's not stopped. He's continued the fight on behalf of our residents. At our next council meeting on David's departure, we will all have an opportunity to voice our comments and our thanks and anything else you wish to throw at him. And I hope that we can then celebrate together his many achievements at this time. I look forward to that moment, David, simply because you need to be recognised by your peers here just how much you have achieved. Thank you.
Dr. Povey.
Thank you, chairman. Well, I endorse what John has said that we owe a thank you, a big thank you to David for his many years of service. Two years as deputy, seven and a half, I think, as leader. I have to say, I haven't always agreed with him. But I do recognise the huge amount of work and time that he's put in. And that deserves a lot of respect. I would endorse one or two of the things that you pulled out as successes. I think the importance of big infrastructure projects like the Walton Bridge, the Eco Park, and also the phenomenal savings that we've made, £540 million, I think. But, colleagues, we are now entering a new era. And it will be under a new leader. So this is an opportunity for the council for new ideas to come in, new ways of doing things that perhaps work smarter ever than we have done before. I think we now have to start to look forward. I'm positive. And I think everybody here should be positive about the future. We have a new vision. And I think part of that is seeing County of Surrey as a place for opportunity. We also, as councillors, we don't have a problem about saying we have a mission because our mission is self-evident. As elected councillors, we're here to make life better for our constituents. And that's what we will continue to do. There will be, over the next few years, new schools, a residence for people with autism, extra care facilities, and a myriad of other small improvements that we all make in our own divisions, carrying on that work that's been going on for the last seven and a half years. So we need to make the next few years a very positive time working together with our partners and with residents as we have been doing to help us achieve the transformation that Surrey County Council wants.
Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, chairman. Everyone in this chamber has made the personal decision to become a leader in their own community. Each one of us knows what that means, the good things about it, the elation when things are going well and you've actually made a difference for your residents. But also the courage it takes to stick your head over the proverbial parapet and to say things that maybe are a bit uncomfortable to people who are out there in the community to try and explain to them why things can't be exactly as they individually want them to be. If you think of that courage and tenacity magnified by 81 times, that's the courage it takes to be the leader of the county council. Because you decide to be a leader for the whole county and to stand up in the full glare of publicity in the way that is much more than any of us have to do individually. The British Army did well in terms of courage, in terms of personal toughness and resilience. They chose well and they developed well, the young David Hodge. But at the centre of a leader, there also needs to be a bit of softness and humanity. Without that, we can all be led by an automaton down some very difficult and really not the right roads to follow. I think we heard somewhere in the middle of that speech a little bit of that softness. But we've also seen it reflected in times when each and every one of us have had individual issues, problems, or things aren't going so well. And David is always very loyal to people, whichever side of the chamber they're on, when they're facing difficulties. So I would like to thank David for his courage in being a leader, but also his humanity in the way that he has supported us as members when we've needed it. Thank you.
Mr. Harmer.
Thank you, chairman.
I guess I've known David Hodge as a fellow county councillor for as long as anybody here. We both joined the council in 2005, and the then leader Nick Skellett threw us together in some interesting discussions, which he asked for our advice and guidance on. It was very clear, very early, that here was a man of clear thought, strong, straight talking, high levels of integrity, and top of the book actually, in my personal view, strong common sense. And that's carried him through extraordinarily difficult times. Interestingly, although we're stylistically very difficult, very different, sorry, stylistically very different, we have agreed on virtually every major decision that's come before the council, which is quite surprising under the circumstances. It's been an outstanding seven and a half years. I'm sure that all of us who've been involved here will remember for the rest of our lives the leadership that David shown over that period, and he deserves a long retirement. Best of luck.
Mr Elwood.
Thank you Chairman. I just want to reiterate briefly that three things about David Hodge. Number one, he really has always had Surrey residents in his heart, there's no doubt about that. Number two, equally as important if not more, he's always had our less fortunate residents in his heart. I remember an impassioned speech he gave about the fact the government was withdrawing our grant for people with learning disabilities. And number three, he has dreamed the impossible dream. He's tried to get more money out of central government. Now, he may not have succeeded, but he's roughed them up I'm sure, together with his former deputy, and I can only hope that his continuous efforts, thank you, will be followed by his replacement. So for those three things, you have my personal thanks. Thank you.
Mr Botham.
Thank you Chairman. I've had the privilege of knowing David Hodge for a number of years. We first served together on the district council. And one thing that he and I have in common is we both wear our hearts on our sleeves. And that sometimes makes life, in public life, extremely difficult because it leaves you vulnerable. But it's that vulnerability which drives our consciences, and that vulnerability which drives our ethical force. And while I haven't agreed with many of the things that David Hodge has done, I have always been able to respect that vulnerability which has driven his moral centre. I owe him some thanks also for welcoming me to the council and welcoming me to my current role. So David, I'm grateful to you, thank you. He leaves his successor a series of extreme challenges, and I hope that his successor will be able to provide the kind of leadership the county council now needs. The first mission will be to explain. The leader will need to explain to residents why maybe closing children's centres will support family resilience and early help, why closing libraries might help and support our communities, how closing some CRCs perhaps will impact on the environment. So those challenges and the need to explain are going to provide our new leader with enormous challenges which will be very difficult to manage. But there is a bigger picture too, and that is in my view, we have a county council and local government undergoing the worst crisis since the Second World War. The need for leadership and a voice for local government is as important, in my view, as it is for the residents of Surrey. Because in my view, the residents of Surrey will benefit if local government is strong. The residents of Surrey will benefit if local government is properly resourced. And the residents of Surrey will benefit if we demonstrate the real quality stewardship that we need to in our current role. We can only close certain things once. We must ensure that our leader fosters the right level of scrutiny and challenge. I welcome what David Hodge has said about that as well. We have to make sure that the decisions that are made are the right decisions, because they will be decisions cast in stone for the future. It will be very hard for us to row back on the decisions we've made. The previous leader made some very courageous decisions, the most courageous in my view was refusing the freeze grant. I thought that was a visionary decision that you made David, and I applaud you for that, because there's no question that the extra resources which Surrey has had have tidied this over. Our council will face a much more challenging investment environment, and our leader will need to find ways of investing in Surrey if the new rules that Sipper's about to bring in will pertain to future local government investments. Chairman, the new leader will have the hardest challenge yet. I wish him or her every success, and I promise him or her the most constructive support that an opposition can give. Thank you Chairman.
Mr Martin.
Thank you Mr Chairman. I guess that I know David Hodge better than most, having served some six years as his deputy leader. There are many things that I could say, but I won't. But what I will say is that when you unearth the real David Hodge, you find a man of tenacity, of courage, of fairness, of high public spiritedness, if there is such a word, and an amazing eye for detail. Many people marvelled at the lack of public disagreement that there was between David and myself during the six years that I was his deputy leader. I have to tell you that we did have our disagreements, and we did have considerable discussion, but as David had said, it was behind closed doors, and once we came to a joint decision, we stuck to it, and therefore nobody felt that there was anything between us. Yes, we did work very closely together here at the county council and with our fellow leaders in the boroughs and districts, and many of our partners across the whole of the, not just the Surrey but across the south east of England, with other leaders as well. We had some interesting devolution discussions along the way. David of course mentioned his role in CCM, and that was quite interesting going to many of those meetings, and of course with the LGA. And of course we did business with our own Surrey MPs and various secretaries of state. I guess if I look back, perhaps Eric Pickles was the most interesting secretary of state that we had to do business with, and when he looks at those people from Surrey, he's still nursing the bruises, I think. So he had a pretty tough time, and we gave him a pretty tough time. So I would like to personally express my thanks to David for his outstanding service in this place. It's been a pleasure for me to do business with him. And I would simply say, of course we'll have another opportunity at the next meeting to say more about this, but I do wish him well as he heads off into the sunset. And by goodness me, I do wish Anne, his wife, good luck. Thank you.
Mr Few.
Thank you Chairman. It is a fact that being a leader of Surrey County Council is quite a challenging role, with a budget of over a billion pounds and a customer base of over 1.2 million people, not easy to satisfy. Pleasing everyone requires constant adjustment from dealing with uncooperative MPs as we've heard, vibrant opposition, unions, not to forget the divergent views of his own party members. I guess in reflection, he's not done such a bad job over seven years. During my tenure in the cabinet, I've been impressed, as has been said previously, by his unrelenting focus on the residents of Surrey. His frustrations have not been able to convince the government to adopt a fairer funding formula for the county. His grasp of detail has mentioned in every aspect of the council's operation. He will of course be noted in history for his notable mention at three prime minister's question times by the leader of the opposition. In conclusion David, thank you for the experience, and best wishes on your forthcoming experience on the backbench, and I will be watching carefully to see whether your successor will be handbagged as Margaret Thatcher did to poor John Major.
Thank you. Mr Harrison.
Thank you Chairman. We do see things slightly differently in opposition. We've certainly suffered with certainly a robust approach from the leader in this chamber, but it's been slightly different in committees and in private. David's efforts and commitments, Surrey have been mentioned, and no one has any doubt in relation to that. We know he had a grasp of the numbers. When he arrived at the council, every council meeting, he's asked what the headcount was, and that showed that he really wanted the council to get to grips with its cost base. He's been his own portfolio holder for finance, and I think that's presented an added burden, but we know he knows the numbers. The PVR programme, I think brought a lot of results in the early years in particular. What I think was surprising to me was how he developed to be dealing with government, both on behalf of the council and with the LGA and other networks. I know he hasn't won all of those battles, but I think he won quite a few, and we have a funding base we wouldn't have had had he not taken up those cudgels. So more will be said at the next council meeting, but those are a few remarks David at this time. Thank you.
Mr Harris.
Thank you Chairman. Well, when I thought I was going to say a few words this morning, I looked at our local press for some inspiration, as we all do, and sadly, I couldn't find a great deal. I did find one line in this well kept secret that we all kept for a week or so, and it said that in 2017, councillor Hodge picked up the CBE. I'm sure councillor Mallett, when he picked up his MBE, what, seventeen years ago, felt the same. It was an honour, and it was an honour for community service, which is two words that we need to remember. You pick up a bottle of milk, you pick up a paper, you don't pick up an honour on behalf of the community. And that led me to look at what I can say positively. I have a quote that I use quite often, actually, I call it Hovey's quote. In other words, it's as good today as it's always been. This goes back to 1912, and Teddy Roosevelt, the President of the USA. I'll read it to do it justice. "Mr Chairman, it is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how strong men stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, and who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at worst, should he fail, at least fails while daring greatly. So to his place will never be with us cold and timid souls who have never known neither victory nor defeat. Leader, councillor Hodge, David if I may, it's time to step out of the arena, but with your ex military head on, may I say you're still on the prey ground, although for this occasion, you may stand easy." Thank you Mr Chairman.
Thank you, we've got five more speakers. I've got Mr Evans, Mr Mallett, Dr Grant, Duff, Mrs Muir, and Mr Witham. So, Mr Evans.
Thank you Chair, colleagues. The leader likes his football, I know, and I don't know whether a few weeks ago he was at Craven Cottage to see Arsenal win 5-1, but I don't know whether it was when the fourth or the fifth goal went in, the Fulham goalkeeper Marcus Bettinelli stood on the edge of his penalty area, looking around him, and he had that sort of look of circumstances beyond his control about him as those goals had gone past him. And I don't think for one minute he doubted his immediate colleagues, but I did think he must have had concerns and feel he was being let down by those who should know better, those higher up, whether it was the manager, the board of directors, or even people higher than that. And I thought as he stood on the edge of his penalty area, I thought the look in his eyes and his face said something, and I thought it looked familiar, and I couldn't quite place that look. And then, it's worried me for the last few weeks, but this morning as I saw the leader stand there, it dawned on me. Here was a talented player, a person with great commitment and great skills, but circumstances beyond his control made him unable to perform at the top of the game as he wants. And the leader has spoken today about the services being cut, the funds being cut by Surrey, and I think the responsibility lies, I mean, I will differ with the leader and have differed with him over the policies and the way things have been taken, but nobody can deny that this council has had to face huge cuts from central government, and the responsibility lies as much with Whitehall, Westminster, and Downing Street as it does here. And any new leader will face those same challenges. So we are in, as the leader said, extraordinary and challenging times. The government has, and I'm quoting the leader, completely eroded funding, and so as Fulham sit at the bottom of the table looking for a way out of it, I'm not sure a new goalkeeper for Fulham will necessarily be the answer, but perhaps new management, new board of directors at the top will be. Thank you.
Mr Mallett.
Well, before David escapes from giving us his regular outright thoughts, I've just got two questions. With regard to all the cuts and funding difficulties which you have described, what mitigation measures have been achieved with the health of Surrey MPs, and what help do you expect from them in the future? And secondly, do you recognise that the benefit which you described of the £250 million in respect of not taking the council tax freeze came from increased taxation of our residents in Surrey on council tax? Thank you.
Call Dr Grant, Duff.
Thank you Chairman. I think it's fair to say that as I was listening to the leader, this day will turn out to be a day of mixed emotions, if not mixed feelings. It certainly will be a day for reflection, and I would certainly reflect on his legacy. And two words come to mind, one is indefatigable, and I think many have already remarked on this, and also advocacy. He has been indefatigable in his advocacy for the county and for his residents at every turn, at every meeting, at every decision. And there are the little things that he didn't have time to mention in the list of what has been achieved during his tenure. I'll tell you, there are three that come to mind. The Public Value Review was a new idea. Let's be more efficient, let's be more effective, let's look into every corner, let's speak to our residents, let's tell them that this is what we're going to do so the money can go further. The School Improvement Programme, not that much money, but achieved remarkably, most of our schools are outstanding or good. That's an everyday experience for every child in this county. And then Project Horizon, with clever strategic procurement, what do we have, extra £20 million for our roads, promises that we can make, a five year programme that we could put in front of our residents for their everyday experience. Now, looking forward, we will reflect on the past, and yes, what awaits us is a challenge. I agree with my colleagues in the opposition, absolutely a challenge, unprecedented. What about the explanations? Well, I can see in today's papers, there is a vision, there is a plan being put forward for council to approve today, and the explanations have begun. We are consulting with our residents, we are telling them what the proposals are, and we are asking them for their views. We are looking at them in the eye and saying, this is what we need to do, and these are the reasons. And I believe there are eighty-one leaders, and absolutely agree with Mary Lewis in this, there are eighty-one community leaders in this room who will have to join in and explain, and that cannot be avoided. We have to be united in looking at our residents in the eye and telling them what the future holds and how they can be part of it. Leader, I'd like to ask you a question. What would be the words of advice that you would give to your successor? Thank you.
Mrs Turner Stewart.
Thank you Chairman. I just think in response to the comments about the future that we all face, I think David Hodge as our leader has done an excellent job in laying the foundation involving structure and rigor to everything that we do, our set of mission in terms of our service and our duty to our residents, and looking to the future, the confidence and optimism that we should all adopt, because as an eighty-one strong team together, as David says, we can deliver so much more than we can as individuals. And I think the legacy that I see David leaving is resilience. Surrey is resilient, we have been resilient, and we will be resilient. Thank you.
Mrs Muir.
Thank you Chairman. Much of what I wanted to say, needless to say, being at the back end of the queue, has actually been said, and I reiterate the fact that David has been an advocate for the people of Surrey and Surrey itself at a time which has been immensely difficult for any leader of a county council. So I would just like to add that I'm particularly encouraged by the recent changes and the appointments that David presided over of Joanna Killian and David Hill, in particular with regard to the fact that their philosophy is that early intervention is vital for children with issues and mental health issues. I see this as a particularly important step forward for the children and families in Surrey, so for that I am internally grateful, as well as all the other things that David has done and brought to this and brought to this county.
And finally, Mr. Witham.
Thank you, Chairman. I have only known David Hodge for the last six and a half years since being a councillor here. But what I have seen at every meeting that we have had is a man of integrity who speaks his mind and is honest with people. His is not a difficult, is a very difficult role to fulfil. And there are many conflicting views and demands that he has had to contend with. But when a decision is come to, he as leader, as the next leader, is entitled to our support. I would say, Chairman, that all of the things that have been mentioned about putting Surrey residents first may sound a bit of a cliche now. So I'll put it another way. What David Hodge has never done is to take the government line or to take the party line and simply accept those. The advocacy that was mentioned is advocating what is best for our people here in Surrey. And that has come across to me in everything that he has spoken about during those six and a half years. I'd like to mention one point that was slipped into his speech, which I very much hope will come through to some fruition. And that is something to help deal with the flooding issues that Surrey has seen in the past years affecting many thousands of people. In my division, there are three flood forums because... Or is it floodfora? I can never know, there's a plural, or forums. But there are three flood forums in my division because my area is particularly affected by that and will very much welcome, if it is possible, to get those building blocks into place to secure the funding to deal with the flooding prevention schemes that our county very much needs. And I'd like to thank David Hodge for all that he has done and all that he's going to continue to do while he remains a member of this council. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, members. So, leader, I call on you to respond.
Can I just say, Mr. Chairman and members, thank you for your kind words and your understanding of putting up at me for the last years. But I think it's not about me. That is the most important thing today. This is about Surrey residents and how you and me, the backbench, as 81 members, do our best and look forward. How will we take a positive vision going forward? I fully understand, having spent time here and at the LGA and other places, it is really tough at the moment for local government. I still maintain that every one of us in local... I don't just mean here in Surrey, but I mean right across the piece. I believe that local government have been the real heroes in the last 10 years. Every single council across the country, every council has done their best despite the difficulties. I sometimes would like to make that clearer to our Members of Parliament. I do believe we have laid a new foundation. I was absolutely clear with the chief executive within two hours after she signed her contract, by the way. I was very clear that there was a time that I was going to go. I'd made it clear in my own mind, I knew long ago when I was going to do it. But I was not prepared to walk away until certain things were done and certain foundations were laid and a clarity of strategy and a clarity of a plan was in place. As Mary talked about my time in the army, that is exactly what in the army we do. We always have a plan, always working on a plan. I could say I'm working on another plan, but I don't want to upset you. But the most important thing for all of us here, as we go to the future, is about making a difference by working together as a team. If we don't work together as a team, the only people who will suffer will be the Surrey residents. I strongly believe there is a talent here. There is people here who are really passionate about how we do things for our residents. In order how... What advice will I give the new leader? Probably nothing, unless the leader asks me. But my intent would be to keep my mouth shut and sit on the back benches. But I think it's important also, there is the one area that I've always had a disappointment, and that is with our children's services. I think we as members, and I was very serious when I said, we need to be the champions for children in need. All of us must stand up together and do what we can and support Dave Hill and the chief executive as we make changes. I can't really give Mr. Evans much advice when my Arsenal-beloved team are tearing Fulham apart. But actually, I have a soft spot for Fulham. Do you know why? Because every time they play, they're trying to be positive. That's what I want us to do. Yes, there'll be times when things aren't going well. There'll be times when you think, oh, well, we better buckle down and we better go behind the shed and, or, you know, behind the counter and do nothing. No, I think we must remain positive all the time, and I wish Fulham all the best. But of course, I do wish my Arsenal-beloved team even greater joy. So when I was in Rotary International, one of the things that we did in the year 2009-10, we had a motto which was called, "The future of Rotary is in your hands." Mr. Chairman and members, the future of Surrey is in your hands.
Thank you, leader. And members, an electronic copy of the leader's statement will be circulated following the meeting. So let's move to item six, members' question time. Members, we've had notice of seven questions. The questions and responses have been sent to members before the meeting. Five minutes are permitted per question for supplementary questions. These must be framed as questions, please, not statements, and be relevant to the original question. Question time will be limited to 45 minutes, at which point I will finish the question we are on and close the item. If there are any questions not covered during the 45 minutes, written answers been tabled, and members can of course follow up with the relevant cabinet member outside the meeting. So, question one, Mr. Evans. Do you have a supplementary?
Only to... Thank you, thank you, Chair. And I know that the leader referred to potholes, and possibly that will be on his tombstone. In many years ahead will be potholes. But if the government's announced £4,200 million to fix potholes across the whole country, how much of that would you think would be useful in Surrey?
Thank you. Call Mr. Essex.
I'll stand up as you stand down, I guess. But I agree with those who said we should all stand together, and it's been great to work with you and under your leadership over the last seven years. So moving on to the question. Is it possible to confirm what correspondence there's been between the council and yourselves as leaders and the Chancellor making the case for more local government funding across the country before the budget? Because although these amounts have been announced, they are far less than is needed, as we well know here, if we are going to provide the current level of services that our residents need.
Members, are there any supplementaries? Leader.
Well, Chairman, as members will realise, it is not unusual for me to be invited to Members of Parliament. It's a habit that I will continue till the 11th of December. I will always put our case forward. In terms of the pothole money that Mr. Evans talked about, late last night, Jason Russell received an email to confirm that Surrey will receive £7.4 million of that money. And we're not sure whether we have to spend this, the 31st of March, but we're looking at that detail. So that would be some good news for us, okay? Thank you very much.
Question two, Mr. Forster.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank the cabinet member for her answer, particularly the update on the charter, which I found very useful. I'm pleased to see that one council is trying to follow working borough council in taking young care leavers out of council tax. I'd like to ask the cabinet member if she could write to the other 10 borough councils that yet haven't done this, particularly the nine that have no immediate plans to do this, if she could urge them to take young care leavers out of council tax so that in April, when the new council tax statements are sent out, that young care leavers have that avenue to get some tax relief to make sure that they can make a successful transition to adulthood.
Anyone else? Mrs. Karen.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. I was very pleased to get this question from Mr. Forster and to be able to take this opportunity to update colleagues. I'm very happy to take the suggestion forward, as Mr. Forster has asked me to do today. But I would just go one step further, because I know in this chamber, there are many members, Chairman, who are also members of district and boroughs across Surrey. And actually, the answer does lie in the hands of district and borough colleagues for them to vote through these motions. So through you, Chairman, could I ask members who are also members of a district or borough council if they could be champions of this on behalf of our care leavers in Surrey and be prepared to stand up and vote for it when it comes before your council? If even you would be happy to move the motion yourself in your own chamber, that would be even better. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Question three, Mrs. Watson. Do you have a supplementary?
I'd like to thank the cabinet member for his answer. But I'd like to ask, is the cabinet member aware that the problem of displacement is far wider with cars being displaced to villages some distance away, such as Westcott, where available parking is limited in order to access the countryside but avoiding the countryside estate and its car parking charges? Thank you.
Thank you for that supplementary. Well, as Watson will recall, that I asked all the members who had car parking that we were recharging later that year, in January, we met, to come and come to each of the car parks. You came, as did many of the councillors in this chamber. What we said then, with the car parking team, would review what we thought was appropriate, and we put that in place. You received from me exactly what we were planning, and then we put that in, in June, July last year. So what we did say at the time was, if there is more displacement than we're expecting, we can use our emergency powers to look at that. So far, Surrey highways have had no information to say that the situation is out of control or there is a danger to the public highway and to future traffic. So if you have some specific, specific issues, please write to me, and I will make sure highways look at it. But I've not received one email from you with the fact that you believe there is a problem. If you send it to me, I will deal with it.
Thank you. Question four, Mrs. Thompson. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Chairman. My supplementary question is, what do you see the role of local joint committees and members in supporting these efforts?
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mrs. Thompson, for your supplementary question. The local committees and the joint committees have a key part to play in all of this, as do many of the other agencies across the county, and in particular, the Community Safety Partnership. The leader mentioned in his speech the Surrey Harbours and the work, indeed, that the Health and Wellbeing Board are doing around looking at engaging multi-agencies and also looking at the key priorities for health outcomes over the coming years. That piece of work will conclude at the end of this year, and a key part of that will be around substance misuse. We do need to look at partnership working, both with the district and boroughs, you know, with the police, you know, with residential social landlords and so on, to speed up and improve the whole process in the way in which the issue is dealt with. Education is an important part, hugely important part for our young children. And indeed, I know in Rygate and Banstead, you've got a junior citizen scheme which can include misuse, substance misuse. And then finally, the Surrey Police. Surrey Police, I gather, are rolling out a series of seminars in each of the districts and boroughs, and that's on serious and organised crime, with the hope that actually those at the front line will actually be able to identify these sorts of issues early and hopefully direct them to the right agencies.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, edging towards a hat-trick. Do you have any supplementaries?
No supplementary, Chair, but just to thank the cabinet member for the response, which I think is good news.
Thank you. Question six, Mrs. Watson. Do you have a supplementary?
I'd like to thank the cabinet member for his answer. And also, I'd like to ask, which are the 14 sites that are mentioned in the answer for proposed development?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, some of the sites that I think are included in the list of public sector properties have been vacant for a good many years. When does the cabinet member anticipate that the schemes will be ready to start building? Because it's very frustrating to see them standing there, year on year, when they could be used for something worthwhile.
Anyone else? Thank you. If you care to reply, Mr. Kemp.
Thank you for the supplementary and all those of the additional question. And as was mentioned in the additional question, there is a list that was in the cabinet papers and shows what the different sites were. And I'm pleased that the opposition members are so supportive of bringing these sites back into use. So when they come to your local planning committees, let's hope that you will be fully supportive in actually allowing us to bring these sites back into use and bring in planning permission for residential sites.
Thank you. And completing his hat-trick of questions, Mr. Evans, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank the cabinet member for the response to what I consider to be a very important issue. And I've looked at the answer, the lengthy answer, and I referred and compared with it with a motion that we passed some years ago in my name. And of course, this council wants to do things which are value for money for the residents that we represent. And we know the times are difficult. But I am concerned that when you come to the paragraph about awarding contracts where it represents value for money, whether this is fully in line with the ethos and principles behind what the council adopted. And I would welcome the cabinet member's response on that. And I would also like to know whether the commercial services, providing fresh fruit and vegetables to 234 schools, whether that is fair trade products. Because I think it's important that our young people learn the relationship between what they're eating and the conditions, in many cases, that the producers, and the amount of money that the producers are getting. Thank you.
Any other members? Mrs. Morley.
Thank you for that further question. I myself am one of those people who do support fair trade. And I will establish exactly how much of the produce that we're getting through these contracts is fair trade. And will take up the comment about ensuring that our policies are fully complied with. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of those questions. But there'll now be an additional 15 minutes for members to ask questions of cabinet members based on the previously circulated cabinet member briefings. These will be taken on a first-come, first-served basis, and there will be no supplementaries. Yes, please, Mr. Witham.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to welcome the comments that have been made in his report by the deputy leader and the cabinet member for economic prosperity with regard to tourism, given that it represents £2 billion a year for Surrey and employs over 35,000 people in the county, and, he says, has the potential to generate further growth and create new jobs. Could I ask the cabinet member to tell us if he feels there may be any possibility of introducing funding to help develop tourism, as for example, discussed by the UK and Scottish governments currently, on some funding mechanism that would enable the Scottish government to develop tourism in Scotland? What is good for Scotland is good for Surrey.
Mr. Fury.
I don't actually agree that what is good for Scotland is good for Surrey.
They can keep their weather.
And equally, I think we should not look to Scotland for guidance, because I don't think they're doing very well under similar circumstances. But they don't recognise their issues. However, I'll come to the question. Visit Surrey as a tourist organisation is a community interest company, and I'm sure members are aware of that. The intent is they have their own board of directors, and they fund themselves and therefore are sustainable. Currently, with a turnover that the council has actually indicated of over £2 billion, it's not something we should step aside from. There is no immediate cash income from it to this council. However, for our residents, for our business, which is where we should be concentrating our view, we are doing... our view, we are doing something about it. We have in Surrey University the third-rated hospitality department in the world, in the world, and we are working with them as a county to draw together a mutual agreement that we can sign up to. It will not incur initially a lot of money, but we need to kick-start this and do it properly. We have 11 boroughs and districts who benefit and currently do not input to how Visit Surrey operates. That will change. Equally, we need to be understanding of what the Scottish government has said, because maybe once in a while, like their rugby team, they have an achievement and an outcome, but we need to understand what it is. So Surrey University and our behalf are in conversations with the universities in Scotland, who are, like our universities, involved in Visit Surrey, and we will come back and give, I will give an account to members about that in the future when we have sorted the thing out. There is a need to make sure that Visit Surrey is sustainable. And with that in mind, we have already had meetings with all of the 11 borough districts, and some very good ideas have come out of that. Equally, for the first time in many years, to date, Visit Surrey as a standalone organisation is now sustainable, mainly because of the interest we're taking in it, and we need to continue that interest. £2 billion is not to be sniffed at for our residents and for our businesses. Thank you.
Mr Essex.
Thank you, Chairman. This is also a question for the Deputy Leader and Cabinet Member for Economic Prosperity. I read in the Cabinet Papers about the plans to remodel the operational estate that will see five larger town hubs and about around 20 smaller satellite hubs by 2025. But I also read on the South East Shared Services e-Sourcing Portal that in addition the council is considering moving its headquarters from Kingston to a location within Surrey, and disposing of the present County Hall for alternative use. In line with these details being shared publicly for those tendering for this work, is it possible that the cabinet member could give an update for us and the public too? Thank you.
Mr Chairman, can I advise the member that I'm not in charge of that particular way forward that we're investigating and which we will depend on? It is Colin Kemp. So Colin, Mr Kemp, would you like to advise the member?
That was a slippery move, John. Thank you for the question and thank you for the passover. At the moment, these are still visions. The numbers that are in the Cabinet Papers are purely an idea of what we're looking to do. The numbers have not been formalised, the actual plan has not been formalised, we're working with boroughs and districts to see what works in their areas, and we're looking to bring a whole strategy together for Surrey. This is about looking at not bricks and mortar, but looking at the best way to bring services forward, and the best way we can deploy that, and the most economically viable way to deploy that throughout Surrey.
Dr Grant Duff.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is to the Cabinet Member for Children. She very rightly in her report, comments on the Family Resilience and Children Centre consultation is the centrepiece of your report, and you very rightly emphasise that we are listening to our residents, and that we need to work on our plan, particularly to provide services to the most vulnerable children and families in Surrey. I want to commend the drop-in sessions, but I noted that there are only 11, and in my borough, there is just one. My borough currently has eight children centres, so it seems to me that we need another opportunity for drop-in sessions for the public. Would she consider adding more drop-in sessions to the consultation, please? Thank you.
Mrs Curran.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the question. Actually, Mrs Grant Duff is not the only member to have contacted me to ask for additional opportunities for engagement on these. Could I remind all members that the drop-in sessions are not only in relation to the Children's Centre consultation, they also relate to the consultations which are out in general circulation in relation to the special educational needs and disabilities proposals, and also about libraries. So having taken that into account, maybe members will be thinking, in that case, there would likely to be even more members of the public who wish to attend. I will certainly go back to the officer team and ask them if it is possible to put on more engagement sessions. You might also be interested to know that by the end of the second, and which was the first full week of consultation, we had had over 1,000 responses to the Children's Centre consultation alone, and that is showing that there is a great deal of interest in our proposals. I am extremely keen that we should hear, as I'm sure Mrs Lewis is, in relation to the SEND proposals, we should hear from the widest possible catchment of interested parties, so that the feedback to our consultations is actually meaningful. And so in that case, I will certainly take those proposals forward for more engagement with residents rather than less.
Thank you. I've got five more questioners, and as it's only 15 minutes, I'll stick to five and whizz through, hopefully. Mr Hall.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I ask the cabinet member for place? Very cheering reading his winter update. However, is he aware that this weekend, we had serious flash flooding for the first really heavy rain of the winter, which actually closed roads or blocked roads across Council Townsend's division, Mrs Carron's division, and my division? We have reports that the drainage contractor we have is, like the last two drainage contractors, struggling to actually move things forward. Can he give us any hope that there will be more targeted efforts, more efforts, and that KIA will actually provide some more support? Because they are being paid to manage this contract.
Mr Kemp.
Thank you for the question, Mr Hall. There is always hope. The issue with the flash flooding is not always about the gullies and the gullies being blocked. What you've got to understand is the amount of rain we had over last week, and then with the torrential rains over the weekend, this is not necessarily that the gully's blocked. It may be the pipes, it may actually be the ditches, it may just be that the river levels are so high that the system cannot handle that amount of rain in such a short amount of time. Given a bit of time without rain, this will then subside, because then the water will run away. So the problem, that road may be flooding, but actually, it may be a problem two or three miles away that's not allowing the water to escape. And we will look at all the different sites, I've had many emails, and they've all gone to officers, and we will look at the sites to make sure that the gully system is working in that place. But quite often, investigation will show that there's other areas, and the systems cannot just take the amount of flash flooding and the continuous amount of rain that it gets. We are working and trying to find funding to improve these systems, to improve the capabilities of these systems, in partnership with people like Thames Water and the Rivers Authorities, and as the leader mentioned in his speech. We're looking at how we make that better, but still, this is a constant problem. And where there are flash floodings, you will get flash floods.
Thank you. Mr Mallett.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the Member for All Age Learning a question on the item of schools' funding. Have you had any support from the members of this council who are governors with regard to the problems you're having with A and B in that section? And do you know what the current excessive reserves of schools are? The last paper I saw in this council, which admittedly was two or three years ago, was in fact that they were up at a level of £50 million. So clearly, there's a big opportunity there, if you can get the governors to actually agree some action. If the governors in this council have not actually got in contact with you on this, could we not have a governors' forum to press home the case?
Mrs Lewis.
Thank you, Mr Mallett, for your question and for giving me the opportunity to say a little about this matter. It came before Cabinet, at the last Cabinet meeting, we had to make the difficult decision that although schools are really important partners for us, particularly in the work on SEND, that we needed to find ways to garner some more financial help from them by going to the Secretary of State and appealing for the maximum amount that we can go for, 0.5%. By way of explanation, I should say that the £3.1 million will come from the £11 million additional funding that's going to schools this year, and so only the schools that would have benefited from additional funding will be affected by this. In terms of support of governors, some members who are school governors did come to that Cabinet meeting, and one, Mr Boston, in fact, did speak at the meeting. I know there's some members of the Cabinet who are also current or have been governors in the past. But the vote has already taken place by Schools Forum, and they voted not to support the County Council in terms of giving the money voluntarily. So to that extent, I'm afraid the governors can't help. But the way that everyone can help, including those members who are governors, is to use the little extract from my report, or maybe some of the information from the Cabinet meeting, to explain to schools why we're taking this money, why we need financial support. Schools said through Schools Forum that they really think that the SEND transformation programme is absolutely right, we're doing the right thing. They supported over 90% of schools who voted, supported the SEND transformation. So if that support is there, then we could perhaps also ask for a bit of support with the public, explaining why we need to have a little bit of money to help us. The council is putting in a lot of money on the SEND transformation. We're putting in capital, £7 million, £5 million for the transformation programme, and there's extra money coming for the Family Resilience Programme, which should help with SEND as well because of early identification, it supports all round. So there is money coming in from the council. Schools have got additional funding this year, the £11 million extra that's going to Surrey schools, and the £10,000 per primary school, £50,000 per secondary school that were announced by the Chancellor the week before last. So extra money coming into schools. We're appealing to take a little bit of that to support us while we do the transformation, which they have said that they fully support. So if governors can take those messages back to schools, that would be the most helpful thing that they could do. Thank you.
Mrs White.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question for the Cabinet Member for Adults, please. In his statement, he has referred to the final versions of the transformation plans and the financial elements of that. My question is, with regard to the budget envelope, has the financial strategy been rag-rated for adults, bearing in mind the difficulties they've been in past years in achieving savings in adult social care? Please, would he share the results of the rag-rating with members? If it hasn't been done, can he confirm that it will be done and the results will be shared at that time? Thank you, Chairman.
Mr Few.
In response, yes and yes.
Thank you. Mr Walsh.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My question is for the Cabinet Member for Community Services, and it's to do with the ministerial visit to our trading standards by Kelly Tollhurst, the new minister, and she particularly showed interest in the scams, that evil, pernicious crime that is going on all the time and is getting worse. And it is even that my residents' meeting, which I will be attending tonight, there is a presentation from one of the Surrey friends of our scams team about that very subject, and I would ask that if the cabinet member could tell us if the minister could brought any financial or other help from the government for us to combat this particularly nasty crime.
Thank you. Mrs Turner Stewart.
Thank you, Council Walsh. So the responsibility that we have is a national responsibility, so it's funded by the government. But clearly, this is, as you say, a pernicious issue which affects many of us. I think many of us have been scammed ourselves, and we certainly represent lots of people who are vulnerable. So this is something that we're looking to broaden. We obviously have our own initial responsibilities within Surrey, primarily to focus on within trading standard, but our national responsibilities will continue.
Finally, Dr Povey.
Thank you, Chairman. Question to the Cabinet Member for All Age Learning, really on the same point as Mr Mallett. The Cabinet agreed to make this appeal to the Secretary of State. Have we had any indication from Secretary of State whether he will grant that appeal? And have there been any other similar cases across the country?
Mrs Lewis.
Thank you. Yes, there have been many other councils that have said they're going to make the same appeal, because the cost of SEND services following the 2014 changes has increased for many councils. And so, yes, we have other people doing it with this. The first part of your question was about, sorry, I've lost it. Could you tell me again? Oh, have we heard back? Sorry, yes. No, we haven't yet heard anything back.
Thank you. That's the end of that session, and obviously, anyone who's missed out on any comments, they can always go straight to the cabinet member in due course. So moving to item seven, statements by members, I've got no statements by members, so moving to item eight, original motions. Got 90 minutes for deliberation in total, and I've only received one original motion, standing in the name of David Hodge. Understanding Order 12.3, council has to decide if it wishes to debate this motion today. Does the council wish to debate the motion now? I'm hearing General Asensio move to debate the motion. Leader, do you have a second, or? Thank you. Mr McIntosh, would you like to, no, Leader, would you like to move the motion?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm glad we've got 90 minutes for this. As I look around the chamber, aside from myself, I fail to spot very many young people. I know I am, but still young. I believe it's fundamental that their voice is given greater prominence within Surrey. Last week in the House of Commons, 14-year-old Alec McDermott from the UK Ute Parliament spoke passionately and eloquently about the role of young people, and how he felt, and the Ute Parliament felt, that they should have earlier engagement in the political processes of this country. Mr Chairman, I agree with young Mr McDermott wholeheartedly, so I was delighted that on the 23rd of October, my Cabinet met with a number of members of the Ute Cabinet of Surrey. We agreed at the conclusion of a very productive and enjoyable meeting that their roles should be closely aligned with that of their County Council Cabinet counterparts. I'm pleased to report, Mr Chairman, that process has already started. One of the suggestions that was put forward at that meeting by one of my young deputy Cabinet Members, Cameron, was to create a Ute Mayor for Surrey. I had a number of letters from the people who attended that meeting, thinking it was a great idea. So I believe this would be a tremendous opportunity for this council to demonstrate we want young people of Surrey to play a role in both political and in a civic sense. We want their voice to be heard as much as they do. Mr Chairman, I recognise there will be details that will need to be assessed, including funding as well as the process for election, which officers under Dave Hill will bring forward after discussions with the Ute Cabinet. In order for a formal and agreed process to be established with the relevant select committees in due course, I expect the first elections to be held in May 2019, which is six months later. Mr Chairman, there are already a number of events around the county, insurgated by young people and our district and boroughs, where I believe the Ute Mayor could play a major role by representing younger people on a wider stage. I'm delighted Cameron was so keen to second this motion, so he can put his own perspective on the idea. Thank you, Mr Chairman. I hope all members will support this.
Thank you, Leader. Mr McIntosh, do you wish to second the motion now or reserve your position? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think this is a fantastic idea, actually. I certainly know that our new Director of Children's Services, Dave Hill, helped to establish a youth mayor in Croydon, which has been a huge success. I've been in touch with the Croydon Council CEO to get their take on this concept, and I know it's worked well. Speaking with other members at Croydon Council, they believe this has been a huge success for that borough. I agree that young people should be given every opportunity to take part and have their voices heard, whether that be at national level or at local level. And how fitting that this is proposed just days after the Armistice Centenary. Young people today have so many more opportunities than previous generations, so let's make sure we hear their voices and ideas, and let them contribute. sure we hear their voices and ideas and let them contribute to both the council and society in general. Together, I think this can be a force for good for this county. It's about time this council started to reflect the overall population of Surrey. I'm grateful for the opportunity as well that I have been given in the cabinet by David Hodge to serve as a deputy cabinet associate. I think we need more young people to get involved in local politics because our voices also need to be heard at this level. I have shown that age is also not a barrier and I would like all people to have, all young people, to be given the same opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. MacIntosh. Members, the motion is now open for debate. An amendment from Mr. Button has already been circulated, but I understand that you've withdrawn it, Mr. Button, is that correct?
Chairman, in view of the leader's comments, which effectively cover off the content of the amendment, the amendment is no longer necessary. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So I open for questions. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a young student who lives in my division and indeed she attends the school where I am chairman of governors. Her name is Annabelle. She is a youth councillor for Waverley and Guildford. She is a member of the of the youth parliament for Surrey and she also attends the UK Youth Parliament. Tonight, she's competing in the English-speaking union's MACE debating competition. A snappy title, isn't it? But she's speaking on the importance of young voters and young people's representation. In supporting this motion, I will be thinking of Annabelle and others like her who are interested in the processes of democracy and in the events that shape our future. Our future is indeed our young people, Mr. Chairman, and I would urge all members to support this motion. Thank you.
Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman. In a previous life, I was head of a sixth form and one of my roles was to run general studies during which I tried to interest young people in the democratic process and politics and local issues and so on. And we had question times and various other ways of engaging them and politicians were very supportive, local and national, in coming in and participating. But the kind of participation that we had a few weeks ago when Surrey's youth cabinet met with Surrey County Council's cabinet was much more meaningful than that. We were able to meet face to face with young people who are fulfilling parallel roles on the Surrey youth cabinet with the cabinet that we are on. And I thought that the most inspiring part of this project was that we could have really meaningful discussions with our counterparts, that we could ask for their input when there are policies coming up, when there are decisions to be made. And in that very modern way, you know how young and trendy I am, I've made contact on Twitter with my counterpart, Rory Moore. We follow each other and have made comments about, he's made comments on various things. So I'm going to tell you today what he thinks about this motion rather than what I think because that's the most important. And Rory Moore, who's the cabinet member for education on the youth cabinet, said that he thought he was strongly in support of Surrey having a youth mayor and indeed he and a number of other people on the youth cabinet would be interested in standing for the role and standing for election. And youth cabinet are no strangers to running elections. They recently ran an election look for votes all across the county in a campaign called Make Your Mark. Sixteen thousand young people in Surrey voted from their schools and they decided that mental health and knife crime were the two issues that were of greatest concern to young people in Surrey. So if they can get sixteen thousand people, young people, to vote in Make Your Mark, I imagine they can galvanise even more when they are standing for election themselves and they're running their own personal campaigns. So I'm speaking on behalf of my counterpart on the youth cabinet in urging you to support this motion.
Thank you. Mrs. Curran.
Thank you, Chairman. I too wanted to refer to the Make Your Mark campaign that the youth parliament have recently led and the importance of us all, this council and other public authorities, in listening to what young people are telling us. When you hear sixteen thousand young people in this county telling you that they are concerned about mental health, I think that's a really, really powerful message. And equally, when you hear sixteen thousand young people telling you that they are concerned about knife crime in Surrey, I think that too is a really powerful message and one that those who are in power need to take cognisance of and be and use that to form public services. We are going to be talking later on in our meeting about the vision that we have for Surrey and the way that we want to work in future. We say that we are going to put children and young people at the heart of our policies. If we are going to do that, then we have to listen to their voices. We have to listen to sixteen thousand young voices telling us that they are concerned about their own mental health, they are concerned about their own safety in our county. If we are going to transform our services and we are going to transform them for the benefit of those who use our services, we need to listen to them. We need to ensure that young people know that we take them seriously and in doing so, we need to give them the power to change things. And that is why this proposal, giving the power to young people to actually take some control of things that affect them, is really worthwhile.
Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a member of the corporate parenting board and sometimes I feel to myself that it is getting more and more difficult for me to identify properly with young people because I'm no longer young, unfortunately, unlike one or two others around here. And I was just wondering, and it came to me literally in the last five to ten minutes when this motion has come forward, if there is a way that the Surrey youth cabinet and the young people there can help us on the corporate parenting board in the work that we do so that we just understand a little bit better than possibly we do at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Amund.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, I'm absolutely in support of this motion. Young people are our future after all and it is absolutely right that we should listen to them. Many of you know I know our school governors and going to schools and talk about democracy and different tiers of local government. And I just want to tell you a story that happened some time ago and you'll tell, you'll hear how long ago when I tell you the story. I went into, I think it was a year nine group and I said, we're talking about different tiers of local government. So I said, that was local government, I said, but we'll start at the top, we'll talk about national politics. So can somebody tell me here, who's the prime minister? Hand went up and they said, Tony Blair. So I said, yes, absolutely correct. Now, who can tell me, who is the leader of the opposition? Another hand went up, Gordon Brown. Now, I know they were listening to obviously the news at the time, but I have to say that if the same questions were asked today, I'm sure similar things would be said in respect of our own government today that's in power. But I just wanted to say that because I think it's an amusing story that I do tell from time to time. But it is absolutely right that we listen to those young people, that we hear their voices. Our world when we were young was a very, very different place. We didn't have the internet, we didn't have all the issues that young people probably have to deal with today. So absolutely, let's hear those young people, absolutely in support and anything I can do within the select committee to speed up the process. I'm really pleased, Chris, that you withdraw your your motion because our next meeting is not until the sixth of March and we really need to get on with this so we can have elections in May. So well done for raising the motion. Thank you, David. What an accolade to actually do that today as a motion, the last motion you'd be probably putting before us today for the rest of the council. So absolutely in support.
Mr. Essex.
Thank you. I agree with the sentiment of this motion that the voices of young people should be better heard. And I agree with councillor Curran that this should mean young people taking control of things that affect them. But if we really listen to all of our young people, why would we reduce our youth offer to a skeleton service without asking young people if that's what they want? Would a Surrey youth mayor have a say on these sort of things in the future or indeed whether we invest more in mental health for young people? Whether it's okay for Redhill's Friday Night Youth Club to now only run on a Monday? How will we let our young people hold us to account? This autumn, a fifteen-year-old girl, Greta Thunberg, decided to go on a school strike at the parliament in Sweden to get politicians to act on climate change. She said, I'm doing this because no one else is doing anything. It is my moral responsibility to do what I can. I want the politicians to prioritise the climate question, to focus on climate and treat it like it's a crisis. I hope this this motion will lead to a wider political engagement across our schools and colleges and that this is very much an open access vision which allows all young people to get involved. Certainly, if I think when I was young, I wouldn't have had the confidence to stand up and be a young person to act in this way. So I think that there needs to be some investment to make sure it isn't the young people already have confidence but everyone who can take part. And within that spirit, I support this motion.
Thank you. Got three more speakers, Mr. Forster, Mrs. Thorne, Mr. Elwood. So, Mr. Forster.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm quite pleased Cameron replaced me as the baby councillor of the group. When I was first elected several years ago, I was twenty-two at the time. A long time has passed since then. I am pleased we've now got younger people than me involved. Obviously, we're all far too in the minority. I am very supportive of this motion. I think involving the Surrey youth cabinet in county hall matters will make our decisions better and it's part of that process of engagement and ensuring we take what they say from that. And I think by involving them, it should make, it would make sure that a county council decision, we fully think through how it will impact young people. And that's not something that we've done and hopefully with this motion being agreed, elections held, we will start to do that. Like an equality impact assessment, like an environment impact assessment, we will have a comment and suggestions from the Surrey youth cabinet. That's how I would like to see this seen through. We've talked a lot about how local government has coped with funding cuts since two thousand and ten, earlier this morning. But actually, those funding cuts, whether they be local government or national government, those funding cuts have fallen disproportionately on younger people because their voices are not heard. The elderly, the middle aged, their voices are clearly heard in the ballot box and in the press so that their services that they use aren't touched politically with a barge poll. But younger people are seen as dispensable. That is completely wrong, but I'm afraid that's why their services have been hammered much harder than other generations. And that isn't reasonable and hopefully this motion, if agreed, will be a small part of that change to try to equal the playing field. I'm quite pleased the leader of the council referred to the youth parliament that took place last week up in Parliament. I watched a little bit of it, I was very impressed with how brilliant and articulate they were, but also how well behaved they were. In another role that I have as mayor of Woking, I had to chair a meeting of Woking students that came to the council chamber. Later that night, I had to chair a full council meeting of adult borough councillors and I think we all know which ones were much better polite, concise, articulate. And sometimes I wish I'd like to swap them around a bit. But I think with these young people being involved in politics, we've got a very bright future ahead. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Thorne.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got mixed feelings about this. I think it's a brilliant idea and as an ex-youth worker who worked with young people in Surrey with special needs, and I don't mean English as a second language, I mean this was mental health, it was drug abuse, it was paedophiles, it was real special needs. And I would have meetings with these young people, we would have proper meetings and whoever had the hat on would speak and the rest of the people around would listen. The first meeting I ever went to at Tandrid Council, I couldn't believe it. I said to the leader at the time then, can I bring a hat into the next meeting we come It was like a rabble, everybody wanted their own voice heard at the same time. All I could say is, I support this one hundred per cent. I think it's wonderful that we are going to give our young people a voice, but please be careful what you wish for because they are always very, very honest. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, Chairman. With respect to Will and Cameron, I think when my young colleague Matt Furnish joined, he actually halved the average age of this chamber, but I may be wrong on that, we'll see. I fully support this motion. I have very close relations and friends in a little town called Montmorel, just south of Poitiers in the middle of France. That little town has a full junior council with a junior mayor. And that is not unusual in France, whatever you think of the French, they are very political. And it worked, well, you know, when they go on strike, they really go on strike. And it works very well and it involves people from a young age and I think that is so very important. And dare I say with Mr. Evans here, what did Jeremy Corbyn do in the last election? He got the student vote out and that demonstrates how important young people are. But I think it's so vital that younger people in their lower teens understand politics and don't regard it as something that doesn't affect them and they're not interested in. So I think it's a great motion, David.
Thank you. Interesting debate. Leader, would you like to reply?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it just demonstrates that this is a unique opportunity and I really did want to put this forward, probably as a swan song, because I do think that young people's voice is so important. I think sometimes we as politicians, both in local government and national government, forget to listen to the young people. I think all of us in the cabinet who attended the meeting on the twenty-third of October upstairs, we were impressed with the way the young people spoke about the needs of today, the issues of the day. I think we were slightly surprised that knife crime was a major issue in the minds of young people. Those of us who live and work on the borders of London know exactly, it is happening a few miles from our doorsteps. I think this is an issue that we should challenge, it's an issue we should work on, it's an issue we cannot leave, as the mayor of London said, for the next generation. I believe, Mr. Chairman, it's our job, it's on our watch, we should be doing something about it. But in terms of mental health, I really do think that people have to today, our age group, those of us who are twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, or even eighty, is anybody eighty here, must remember one thing, the conditions young people grow up today, the challenges they have of our society. None of us, most of us here, apart from probably Will and Cameron, really did genuinely experience, or maybe Marcia, but most of us did not experience Twitter, did not experience social media, did not understand what the word bullying on social media means. It's really major issues these days and I think we need to address that. It's these issues that drive young people to mental health issues and in some cases, suicide. So whatever we do, we must be confident that we can work and show that we will take the first step. I'm not asking that tomorrow we will have a mayor and the mayor's going to change everything. I'm asking us all, on this journey, let's take the first step. Let's be brave, let's say we want to work with young people and they want to work with us. And if we can do anything to help with mental health, to help with issues on knife crime, because that's what the young people told us all, I think this would be a great step forward for this council, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, members. An excellent debate. So I now put the motion to the vote. A show of hands and electronically, so all those in favour, please raise your hand and press the yes button if the green light is showing. All those against, please raise your hand and press the no button if the green light is showing. And any abstentions, similar fashion. Excellent. That's a unanimous result. Thank you very much. The motion is therefore... Item nine. Organisation strategy, preliminary financial strategy, transformation programme and our people's strategy, page twenty-five onwards of the agenda. and Our People's Strategy, page 25 onwards of the agenda. I call the leader to introduce the report.
Mr Chairman and members, it seems fitting that as I prepare to pass the baton on to a new leader, that I am introducing this report, which sets out how the council plans to achieve the outcomes in the community vision for Surrey. I believe this is one of the most important sets of papers to come to this chamber during my time as leader. As we all know, Surrey County Council is facing huge financial challenges, and we have significant savings to achieve. At the same time, we just manage, we have to manage huge demand for our services from our residents. As I mentioned earlier this morning, Mr Chairman and Members, despite the number of residents needing our support, continuance is continuing to increase. Our core government funding has been cut by £230 million since 2010. And what I didn't tell you earlier this morning is that we've also suffered the loss of public health grants since 2013 of £84 million. So you add those two figures together, we're talking about over £300 million disappearing. On top of that, we have made £540 million of savings. But the challenge to make further savings is rentless and hard. The key factor to the changes proposed is a direct result each year of £66 million that this council loses because of government decisions. It is the cumulative impact of this annual loss which has placed Surrey in our current position, despite what everyone else tells you. It means that to remain financially stable and able to live within our means, we have to be a fundamentally different organisation. The proposed strategies, which we will shortly be discussing, are a key to achieving that. Setting out how we think we will work with residents and partners, so we can provide the best possible support within the resources available to us. It creates the environment for us to transform the way we deliver services by being more joined up with our partners, shaping services around the residents and our communities, and using technology better. These reports set out how the council plans to contribute towards achieving the outcomes in the community vision, and comprise a number of strands. The first one is about the organisation strategy to 2021, the focus on ensuring that no one is left behind and takes a fresh approach to partnership working, setting out the priorities and principles we will use to guide over the next few years. The second report is the first time we've brought this, which is a preliminary financial strategy that sets out the objectives and parameters within which we will manage our financial resources and set a balanced budget for 2019 and beyond. A set of full business cases, which sets out how we will change and transform services over the next two, three years, are also attached. And our people, our workforce strategy, setting out how we will lead, manage, support and organise our staff is critical, bedrock of all of this. These documents are interdependent and rely on each other in order to be successful. They will support us all in the aim of achieving improved outcomes for residents and securing a more sustainable county council for the future years. To help us achieve the vision, it's going to mean taking some of the toughest decisions this council has had to face. Tough decisions that you will find difficult on the doorstep, tough decisions I'll find difficult on the doorstep, and tough decisions that will come back here that we will probably vote in favour, but with the most heaviest heart we will ever, ever have done in this chamber. None of us want to do this, in my view. And as everyone in this chamber is aware, last month, we launched our consultation in five areas as part of our transformation plans to tackle our financial pressures. These consultations are on the children's centres, concessionary fairs on Surrey buses, special education needs and disability services, how would we look at our libraries as a difference in the future, and the role of our community recycling centres. We know some of the things we are proposing will not be popular, but we have to look at how we can change things and how we finally do different things. And I'd like to urge our residents to take their time to have their say on the consultations. I urge them to read the information, analyse it, and then fill out the consultation. Because I believe that way, we will get a better response. And then our residents will help us to shape the services we provide to you and families. Before these documents were approved at Cabinet, I'd like to say thank you to the chief executive and to Michael Coughlin, who've held a number of meetings in the Ashcombe Room, going over the various details of the transformation plans, the Plymouth Strategy and the Organisation Strategy. And I thank the members who've made the effort to attend, because I do believe that's been really helpful in finally doing this. So the final documents were approved, which are on your paper today, at Cabinet last month. An approval today would herald a new financial and strategic direction for the council, which is always for the long-term benefit of Surrey residents. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Leader. Members, the item is now open for debate. Mr Spence.
Thank you, Chair. The document takes the vision and it starts to drill it down into strategies and programmes. And it's got Joanna's name as the lead officer, and that's good because I can see her fingerprints all over it. Michael explained the details of it to our group very well and very carefully. And I want to pick up on something David said, which was Surrey has to be a fundamentally different organisation. And he said in his earlier remarks that the future of Surrey is in your hands. It is. And I think as we move this document towards the Cabinet meeting in January, ahead of recommendations to the council on February, something very fundamental has to change. And here's what it is. This document cannot solely be worked down through a blue prism only. It has to also come down through a yellow prism, and a green prism, and a red prism, and the rainbow prism that's made up by the residents and independents group. And therefore, what I am going to suggest, and I was going to suggest that before I knew about current events, is a fundamental change has to be made in Surrey, and it's this fundamental change. We have to move to a cabinet of all the talents to implement this. The majority of the Conservative group has got to use its numbers to put together a cabinet that's made up proportionately of Conservatives, but also Liberal Democrats, a Green, a Labour, and residents' representation, if you want this to be implemented, as people talked about, working together as a team. This is all from the previous discussion. An 81-strong team, "How do we do our best and look forward?" These are all quotes, importance of the different voices and challenges. If you want to go fast, go together. We cannot change the world on our own. With respect to the Conservative group, you can't. You have a particular view, a particular prism, and there are valuable things in it, as well as things that we on the opposition side would not agree with. And the only way that this is going to work for Surrey in a positive way is if that cabinet that meets in January is made up of representation of all of the groups. So I would invite the Conservative group to make that change, to make that decision. And as part of the process in looking at who the new leader is, because David's decided it's the time that he should move on, that that new leader, who will be a Conservative, because that's the majority group, has a cabinet drawn from the entire council to implement this.
Mr O'Reilly.
Thank you very much, Chairman. In response to Mr Spence's comments, and I won't dwell on them, might I just say, from my point of view, this council does need fundamental democratic reform. I don't happen to believe that his particular suggestion is the right way to go about it, but we ought to have and initiate a discussion in this council to achieve much greater membership of this council in its decision-making process. And perhaps I'll have to say more about that in my own good time. Coming back to the motion, though, as moved by Mr Hodge, I'm very much in favour of pretty well all the proposals here. So the vote will get the motion, the recommendations will get my support. But I am asking perhaps for reassurance, and I'm not altogether sure that I got reassurance, at least from some of the comments that Mr Hodge made. And I refer specifically to B in the recommendations. It says, "Approve the preliminary financial strategy, which sets out a draft balanced budget for 2019-20, without the use of reserves, subject to the outcome of consultation, engagement, and equality impact assessments." Now, that's quite benign, and it would be benign if, and only if, the current five consultations, the statutory consultations, which will have a financial impact and will have a serious impact on the services this council provided, are not yet included in that draft budget. Because if they are included in that draft budget, then what is the point of the consultations in the first place? Because the decision will have already been made. So if the leader or any other member of the cabinet can reassure this council that the consultations are genuine, when the feedback is written, and Mrs Curran said that, you know, a thousand have been received just on her area, or one area, the children's centres alone, and it's going to be a much larger figure, but I assure everybody in this council, by the time the consultation closes in January, we must be assured that no financial implications of those consultations are included in this draft budget, or if they are, they can be taken out of a budget in January. Because this consultation, this important consultation, has to be genuine, has to be credible. And in order for a budget that is produced in February to also be credible, this has to apply.
Mr MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. Dr Grant just pointed out earlier that there's only one consultation drop-in session organised for every area in Wargate. Unfortunately, she received a positive response from the cabinet member. I have to point out, however, that there's no drop-in sessions organised for Farnham. And Farnham is actually, we sometimes wonder if the good folks here at County Hall remember that Farnham is actually part of Surrey, perhaps because it's at the right other end of the county and largely surrounded actually by boroughs from Hampshire. And we're trying to do something about this, in fact. And I have to say that we were very pleased to have a visit recently from our chief executive, who spent the afternoon in Farnham with one of our senior officers. And Colin Kemp recently did a similar thing. And he's the cabinet member who's responsible for many of the areas that we have problems with in Farnham. So we're very pleased to see that progress. But in terms, going back to the specific point I'm making, our residents would have to make something like an hour's round trip to either Guildford or Cambly or perhaps Godoming to take part. So it just seems remarkable that there's no session organised for Farnham. And we'd request that that is looked at and corrected. So that's the point I wish to make. I want to make a secondary point, actually. It's pointed out in the consultation list, the list of drop-in centres, that five of them involve visits from the people representing the CRC. And it says they'll be attending the affected areas. If you look at the actual areas they're intending to visit, they're actually the unaffected areas. They're intending to visit Cambly, Leatherhead, Caterham, all of whom have recycled centres that are not planned to be closed down. They're also planning to visit Staines and Godoming, neither of which actually have recycled centres in their areas. So I think, again, that needs to be looked at. If they wish to visit the affected areas, they need to be going to places like Farnham where there's a proposal to actually close down the recycling centre. So that's my comment. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Mr Essex.
Thank you. I cannot support these plans as they stand. I would say, where is the evidence that these plans won't really hit Surrey's most vulnerable and our environment, let alone make them better? If you close recycling centres after residents have rejected such plans three times, then will recycling rates still go up, as we've set out? How many libraries are needed? How many are planned to close? The plans don't say. And don't cut children's centres. They are our existing local family resilience hubs. Will parents of our most vulnerable in Earlswood afford a £2.50 each-way bus fare to Red Hill if Stepping Stones closes? We don't need 20 satellites. We need 58 hubs. And there's a reason why these services are local, and we've already heard it today, to reach children earlier on closer to home. That's why, if we want a universal service, if we want to reach out to all people who need our help across the council, we need local provision. We need to know what the actual need for these services are, so we don't cut them below what is needed for them to be sustainable. What might a truly long-term vision fit for 2030 actually look like? What's a green alternative, if you like, for selling off and selling out Surrey? We would invest to save. We need solar on all our schools and public buildings. That would be a start. And it would give a better return than investing in warehouses in Wiltshire. We need to stop outsourcing care. We could run our own care for looked-after children that aren't able to be fostered and provide the send-school places we need here in Surrey, rather than using non-maintained independent placements outside of Surrey. That alone would save tens of millions of pounds. And investing in running our own, better residential care for adults with severe disabilities and our eldest-inneed, we could provide better care if we own it. And why not have one joined-up plan rather than the two we have here? Not a quarter of a million of budget cuts and savings on one hand, and on the other hand, a billion pounds of property deals as two separate things. We need to bring together place and people. And I think if we do that, or we co-locate things a lot better, we would also invest an awful lot more in sustainable transport in these plans. Now, every year since I've been on this council in 2013, let alone going back to 2010, this council's budget has been dominated by cuts. We need the government and the council to lead together. They are of the same party. It is possible for a political party to be united. And neither, you said, we cannot change the world on our own. Well, I agree. We need to stand up and do this together. That needs local, truly transformational plans and vision and leadership that is backed, not limited, by our national political budgets. We can beat this. We can be truly transformational, and we can be far more ambitious. But I think that ambition needs to be directed in a far more positive way.
Mr Darby. Mr Button.
Thank you, Chairman. I, for one, and my colleagues over this side of this chamber, will in no way astew the requirement to make difficult decisions. The challenge before us today is to understand precisely what The challenge before us today is to understand precisely what those difficult decisions are. I want desperately to know what the impact on children and families, and families with special needs, and families who use children's centres, and people who have regular use of community recycling centres, and people who use libraries, I want to understand what the detail of those proposals is. And despite all the excellent briefings and the intelligent and robust conversations that we've had, I don't know that detail. I don't know how to respond to the consultation on children's centres, because I'm not, and I should know more than anybody, as Vice Chairman of the Select Committee. What I think, and I think this picks up points that we've already heard, what I think is that we are not yet ready to take these decisions, because we don't yet know enough detail. Nail me to the mast, if you will, when I know what I'm doing, and when I know what I'm hearing, and when I know what the impact on the most vulnerable people in our county will be. But I don't. And I cannot, therefore, support these resolutions at this time, pending the outcome of the consultations, which I have to say, all constructed in fine words, but don't give residents the detail on which to comment. Now, somebody has to stand up for them and say, I don't know what this means, and if I don't, they don't. So I can't support this now. I think it's premature, and I think it's disappointing.
Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. Last month, the debate of the community vision for Surrey, 2030, this month, we are back to reality. What is next year's budget and what services are residents going to receive for their money? I'm pleased the budget envelope's coming to us now in November, rather than relying on the council in February. And then leaving, as we do, all the specifics to Cabinet in March. This is a much more sensible way of moving forward. We can see the pressures, the grants, and at least at a high level, we can see the impact of transformation projects and other changes. This could lead us to a proper debate in February, could do. The papers have 20 transformation projects, and I will comment on most of them. Four projects are well overdue, and I support them. The Accommodation with Care and Support, the Learning Difficulties Transitions Project, the Extension of Out-of-Country Care for Children, of In-Country Care for Children with SEN, avoiding the use of out-of-county placements, and the Health and Social Care Integration Project. These will affect resident services, but I do think they're necessary in the way we're moving. Now, these projects have all been identified several times previously, many previously reported. They were highlighted by the Sustainability Review Board as a quid pro quo to avoid the 15% council tax hike. Unfortunately, little was done at that time. If they had been pursued with vigour by the Cabinet and Office of Team, then perhaps we wouldn't need to dip into reserves this year to balance the books. And that still is the current situation, unless we deliver the extra savings we've seen. And the cuts we are looking at this year wouldn't need to be so deep. Seven of the projects, I think I can support outright, somewhat obvious, I think, in terms of their benefits. The Finance Transformation, Agile Workforce, Orbis, Performance Management, Fees and Charges, Customer Experience and Digital. Six projects picking up on other colleagues' statements, we need more detail to understand the savings, to see if they're both practicable and doable in the timescales. We are trying to do an awful lot in a limited time, and to understand the resident input, impact. In this category, I would include the Adult Care Practice Improvement, the Highways Project, the Care Market Management and Commissioning, and I hope Select Committees can get to grips with these before we come back in February. The spans of control project needs to tackle systems and bureaucracy and not just management structure. I have serious concerns with two projects, and particularly, I can't see the drastic reduction in children's centres and their staffing will support our objectives for family resilience, providing early help, avoiding drastic and expensive options. How is this no-rum front door? In libraries and cultural services, there's a £4 million reduction. This cut is too deep, it's too large a slice of the net budget of this service, there will be very little left. Chairman, these are two projects I cannot support, and I shall be voting against recommendations B and C. Thank you.
Mrs. Curran.
Chairman, at our last meeting, when challenged, I spoke about my ambition for our children's services, and our ambition to provide good, if not outstanding, services for children and families in this county. And on page 103 of these papers, you will see that ambition for children's services put together in the outline business case for family resilience. And that's the plan for our rapid and robust plan, proposals for how we are going to go about providing excellent services for the most vulnerable people in our communities. And it's fully in line with the strategic principles that are run like a golden thread through all of these business plans. Our fresh approach to partnership, for children, we have to work in partnership, because our partners are the way in which we look after our children and young people, whether they be schools, whether it's the police, whether it's the health service. How we are going to help people to help themselves and each other, that is the very principle of building family resilience. How we are going to engage more with residents. Yes, for children's services, we are going to work with our families and for our families, not do things to them. And we are going to achieve that overriding principle, strategic principle of no one left behind. We must do this for our children and young people. And yet, if you go further and you look through these papers, on page two, you will see that we have ambitions for all people in Surrey. We're not just looking at how we can transform our children's services. We know we have to transform our children's services, because Ofsted have told us. And this plan for family resilience has been scrutinised and ratified by the Children's Commissioner, who is telling us this is the right way to go about it. We can look around the country at different authorities which are providing good and outstanding services, and this is a model which they all use. But if we look inside our conscience as councillors, and that's to all of us, and I look round at everybody on all benches, I think we know that as an authority, we cannot go on the way we are. Whether we're talking about the way we do our highways, or whether we do our adult social care, or whether we do our children's services, we know, don't we? Our services have not been good enough, and this is the plan for us to do it better. I was in church last week, and I sang a hymn, the last line of which was, past put behind us, for the future take us. And I think that is embodied by these proposals. We opened our meeting today with a prayer, when we all join together and ask for God's help to be creative and bold, and to achieve responsible stewardship. I believe that these plans collectively are the way that we are going to do that for the people of Surrey in future, and so I will be supporting them.
Thank you. I've got eight more speakers, Mr. Fury, Mr. Townsend, Dr. Povey, Mrs. White, Mrs. Lewis, Mr. Harmer, Mr. Oliver, and Mr. Kemp. So, Mr. Fury.
Thank you, Chairman. It always is disappointing when our opposition go into great detail about what we can't do. Without understanding, you will never be able to make that point. And throughout the last couple of months, we have had seminars in which there was an opportunity for all of you to fully understand. And, Mr. Button, as a Vice Chairman of a scrutiny committee, may I remind you that it is your agenda, in conjunction with the Chairman, that you set, and if you're not satisfied with the answers, then call some extra meetings. Let's be very straightforward about that. It is down to you, sir, as a member of a scrutiny committee, to understand fully before you have discussions or go against a thing. Nick Harrison, I admire you. You've attended, you've actually run through virtually all of the transformation that is being proposed, and you've clearly stated where you have issues and where you have reservations. And thank you for that. And I wish every member of this council had done the same. Without working together, never mind proportionate representation on the Cabinet, we're not going to achieve anything. But to achieve anything, you have, first of all, to understand. Claire Curran got it right, and I love the last line in that hymn that you sang, because it sums up what we've talked about previously today, about going forward, about understanding what is needed and how we can deliver it. My only intent was to stand up and talk to Recommendation D, because nobody's mentioned it. Recommendation D talks about our people, our workforce. Undeniably, the other highest and greatest asset that we have in delivering this, it's not about members, it's about our workforce. They are our ambassadors, they meet more of the public than we do. They meet them in the tough areas where the pot hole has not been done. They meet them when there is another piece of road being dug up, and they have to deal with that directly. And without them, none of this transformation will happen. They understand they need to change. They understand that culture is important. They understand they have to take responsibility. And amongst the transformation that is being proposed is giving them that responsibility, asking them to stand up and deliver, as we expect elected members to do the same thing. They have a freedom now that they didn't have before. There'll be fewer levels of management. It was discovered that on one occasion, one officer had to actually ask three other officers whether they could spend a very small amount of money. That's not just wasteful, it is bloody wasteful, and needs to be stopped. Our workforce deserve our support. It will be difficult for them, as it is difficult for us as members. But quite frankly, we can manage it, because we don't have to deliver it directly, they have to. So that's the point I wanted to make. That is probably with the most valuable asset that we have, and it needs to be encouraged, and it needs to be supported. And quite frankly, I've always found officers are supportive. So let's work with that. Because if we don't, we won't be working with our residents very much longer. Results have indicated there is very little time. It's irrespective what happened in the past, really, because here we are. So how much more time would anybody need? The time is being spent in delivering a series of transformational projects, which members should and could have been fully acquainted with, and if not understood fully, that understanding could have been achieved, had it been pursued. But it hasn't until today, and it's a bit late today. There is a timing in which we have to produce a budget, there is a timing in which we have to announce a council tax, and there is equally the most important part to date, and that is, the consultation is going on on the seven areas of transformation. We need to get that right. So let's not forget, without the workforce, we cannot move forward. Doesn't matter what we think, the workforce, other people will be delivering it on our behalf, but first of all, let's agree that it's necessary, and let's get it delivered.
Mr. Townsend.
Understanding seemed to be a major word in that last statement by the Deputy Leader, maybe future. Understanding, I feel that most people in this chamber do understand the situation and what's going on. As far as the staff are concerned, we were informed, because I was listening at those seminars, 4% of our staff are under 25. Elsewhere, it's 14%. That's quite a big difference. So we've got a lot of change and work to do to change the culture, because those people that are the other 95%, have presumably been with us quite a long time. So culture's going to be a challenging challenge. I want to see the Chief Executive smiley, because she knows the challenge. But I wanted to pick up what was said by my friend over there. I'd like to thank him, my friend, because I thought what he said was very valuable, because it is about the consult. I've told, I've asked, not told, asked my residents in my division to fill in those five consultations. It's absolutely vital, and I do agree. The response I've had from a number of people is, are they truly consultations? Which I think is where we were going before. The CRC's one is a really good one. I'm surprised the members from Dorkingham got up and started shouting about Dorking being closed. Those in the north of Mul Valley may not have the same view, because Leatherhead is being extended and opened, and actually is a more available. So you're slightly splitting what may come from the Mul Valley fraternity. But that's a view that will be taken, and I'm sure taken on board. Children's centres, I think there was a view we mentioned earlier, that 16,000 young people, I think, voted in, or something was mentioned earlier. What will happen if those 16 young people vote and actually put in, or get their parents to put in, saying, I don't want to close any children's centres? What will happen? Will they be closed? Will it be changed? Will we listen to those young people and their parents? Very, very important. What about libraries? What if a library comes forward and says, I was at a meeting that John actually mentioned this, and comes forward with some really positive views as to how that library can be expanded, get more community use, et cetera, et cetera. Three months later, they come back, sorry, pardon, we're closing that. How does that community feel about the consultations that are going on? As I like to come up, I'll leave it there. There is a lot of cynicism out in Surrey about being over consulted, and you haven't finished the consultations, there will be more consultations, I know, following on youth centres, a second tranche saying what we actually are going to do, rather than what we might do. So you've got another set coming up. The people of Surrey, I don't want to get them all consulted out, we need to hear their views, but let's take action on their views, let's not ignore them.
Mr. Povey.
Thank you, Chairman. I reject the suggestion from the other side regarding a cabinet of all the parties. The opposition has got a role, and you should be asking questions. You've been to all the seminars, you've got the scrutiny committees, your local committees, you can ask to go and see officers. But the very fact that you didn't have questions and motions down today suggests maybe you need to be thinking about your role a bit more. I think the strategies, they are realistic. We have to get to a sustainable budget. Does anybody want to have a section, whatever it is, notice 141, is it issued? I'm sure not. So we have to get to a sustainable budget. I'm sure that as things move forward with the consultations, there will be points made, there may be changes, there may be slight modifications. That's what we're about, where we are a democracy, and we're a council that's listening, that's consulting. So I'm not going to be surprised if there are some minor changes around as we move forward. The world changes all the time, so indeed, there might be other things that make us want to change slightly what we're doing. We will need to be fleet of foot, I'm sure about that, and we have got a timescale that we can't really ignore because of the financial situation. So yes, there'll be tough decisions, but I'm very positive, as I said earlier, I think there's lots of positive work going on in the county, through the county council, and overall, life will be better for the people of Surrey.
Mrs. White.
At the last council meeting, we talked about the vision. In this council meeting, we're talking about the organisation strategy and the financial envelope, budget envelopes. They're obviously very, very closely linked together. The delivery of any of this relies very heavily on partnerships with organisations that are legally bound to work with us. So how are you going to convince them that they should get involved and that they should put their already legal... put their already limited resources along with ours? Because, to be quite honest, this council doesn't have a good history of working in partnership with other organisations. The papers before us are a series of very sweeping statements, and it would be hard to disagree with any of them, but really, that's the nature of motherhood and apple pie. But the devil in the end is in the detail, and we're just beginning to see some of that. For example, the section on children's services could have been written before the calamitous Ofsted inspection, the aims would have been exactly the same. In adults, we have an aspiration for people living independently for longer, and that's been our aspiration for many years now. But the support that they need to do it is being eroded by the savings in current care packages and the, quote, managing, close quotes, the future care. There is an aspiration of appropriate housing for all. Now, who on earth would vote for inappropriate housing for all, or appropriate housing for no one? And really, that just shows how anodyne this whole thing is. The detail is in the delivery. There is an ambition to manage the adult social care market. Already, the private sector in adult social care is on its knees, with providers going out of business. We've been trying to manage that market for years. And in Surrey, we're competing with the market of self-funders who already pay substantially more than the council's care packages. Extra care housing is an excellent scheme. But please, Mr Kemp, when will you stop talking about it and start building, even on council land that has been lying vacant for ten years and more? I was very taken with Mr Darby's comments about scrutiny and the need for meaningful scrutiny, and that will be essential through all this. But the number of scrutiny meetings has been cut. It is now a meeting every quarter, I think, for the scrutiny committees. This is going to need far more, and I was really heartened by Mr Furry's comment about calling for extra scrutiny. So watch out, Mr Furry, you may well get what you wished for. You're going to tell me that every journey begins with a single step, that many of these changes will take time to achieve, and the urgency is now. Thank you.
Mrs Lewis.
Thank you. There have been many interesting comments made in this debate, and first of all, I'd like to thank those members who've mentioned that they've asked their residents to complete the consultations, because without that, we really can't get to the detail, we can't really deliver in terms of what our residents want. I'm going to restrict my remarks to the consultations on libraries and SEND, both of which I'm responsible for, and I'd like you to sort of raise your eyes to the stars a bit in thinking about those consultations, rather than using vocabulary all the time about doom and gloom and heavy hearts. So let's start with libraries. As a former English teacher, I have the same emotional attachment to our libraries as they are, as they were when I was a child, as everyone else in this chamber. But our library service was set up in the nineteen fifty's. I was just about born in the nineteen fifty's, just before it stopped being there, and they were an example of civic pride at the time. Boroughs and districts built our libraries, and they didn't always build them in places where the population has grown, where the population is based now, where people need the most. But we remain proud of them because we like the things that they stand for. They stand for access to information for everyone, there's a certain egalitarianism about it that we all like, and that we want to think we're doing the right thing to support the most vulnerable people to have access to learning. After one of the seminars that were offered in terms of, about the consultations, one member who's actually spoken today dashed to me at the end, in support of the library in his division, he said, it's wonderful, it's marvellous, you can't do anything to my library. And yes, it is wonderful, we are attached to them. But I looked up straight afterwards, in the last three years, a fifteen percent reduction in footfall, a thirteen percent reduction in issues in the library that he was so proud to tell me about, because our emotional attachment can't override the statistics. So if people aren't visiting so often, and they aren't taking out so many books, we need to think about how can we do things differently to have that same open-to-everyone, suitable-for-people's lifestyles library offer for the future, rather than continuing to offer what we were offering in the nineteen fifty's and the nineteen sixty's. If we're going to have libraries open in hours when people want to use them, given that both partners in most households work, we need them open in the evenings and weekends, and things that we haven't been able to do as we've salami sliced and reduced the hours of libraries in previous versions of savings. So let's look up a bit and think about how we could deliver things differently in future to make our library service fit for the future. In my report to council, I've asked everyone to draw people's attention to the actual strategy documents. I agree, they're quite difficult to get out there at the bottom of the page in the consultations. But if you look at the strategy document for libraries, it invites residents to look at what's been done elsewhere in the country, what's been done elsewhere in the world, and to think about whether any of these things might be good options for Surrey. I've heard people talking about how it would be easier and better value for money to have fewer libraries but with a deliveroo service between them, so that books came to residents' doors. Maybe we can have more public access computers in other public buildings, so they have to be in places where books are stashed. Let's think widely and invite our residents to look at the strategy, to think about the global, think globally, think nationally, don't just think about what we've got here and now, and think that's the only model. Moving on to SEND, and thinking about remarks that have been made by fellow councillors about how they feel excluded from the process. There was only a couple of full councils ago that we responded unanimously in the positive to a motion to bring our children closer to home, to live, learn and grow up in Surrey. We unanimously agreed to that motion. And now, here is one of the five pillars of the SEND strategy, is the idea of bringing children closer to home. And behind that strategy, there's a commitment in the next two years that will provide a further three hundred and fifty places in Surrey with children, young people for SEND. So behind each of these strategies are practical commitments, practical ways that we can make them happen. And just to follow up on how members can participate in that, there's an excellent Members' Reference Group running as an offshoot of the Children Education Select Committee to pursue me as the Cabinet Member, to ask questions about how I'm doing on out-of-county placements, and to challenge officers to do their best to deliver on the strategy. So if we can agree things in full council, we can follow them up through the scrutiny groups, and we can see our positive thoughts put into action through this transformation. It's certainly not all doom and gloom. Thank you.
Thank you. Three remaining speakers. Mr Harmer.
Thank you, Chairman. A few weeks ago, I was invited to be a member observer at a focus group, effectively is what it was. Fifty-odd people divided into five tables of ten. Mr Harrison and Mr Hall had been on a similar event a few days before. My observation was, so first of all, what happened was that the problems that we're faced with in terms of where we put our resources and how we put our resources were explained quite well, actually, I thought, to the members of the public who were there. And then they were invited to decide how to cut costs. And they were asked to cut costs by ten percent, and there's a very simple mechanism for them to decide which departments those cuts should fall in. And they found that very difficult. And essentially, it seemed to me that they were ending up opting to reduce the, make the cuts, let's say, let's be blunt, make the cuts, in those areas which they least understood where the money was going. And that's unfortunate. They were then asked, oh, actually, the problem's more difficult than we thought it was, there's been more government cuts, now it has to be fifteen percent, so where would you take the extra five percent from? Then it got even more difficult, and they had big debates, and then the time came and they had to hand in what they suggested. I was observing a couple of tables in particular, and one of them, I went over and I said, now, you found that jolly difficult, didn't you? Ten of you around the table. And they said, yes, it's almost impossible. So I said, okay, you try it with eighty-one. And we've had a fairly good demonstration, I think, today. We would probably all propose slightly different things, and some of us very different things. It does seem to me, and it's come up several times, and I think we should centre on this, that the crux of the matter is scrutiny in two forms. One is the seminars which are held to give us better understanding of what the issues are, and then the scrutiny committees themselves being quite robust, more robust than, you may think they're robust now, as things get tougher, you have to get more robust. And to some extent, I was listening very carefully to what Mr O'Reilly said, I think the real issue there is that we probably have to tighten up on the way that the scrutiny committees operate and the power which they have to hold the executive to account, which I think is not as strong as perhaps it ought to be. But that's where the opportunity arises, and if we're going to be successful as individual councillors, then I think we have to concentrate our efforts on what happens in the scrutiny
Mr Kemp.
Thank you, Mr Chair. You've still got Mr Oliver on your list, because I think he was actually before me, but I'm happy to go first, that's fine. I just want a few key points, really. First of all, the title of the document, Organisational Strategy, Primary Financial Strategy and Transformation Programme. It's a strategy, I Googled it. A plan of action designed to achieve a long-term overall aim. We've got our vision, we've talked a lot about finance today, and if you think some of these cuts are not as bad, if we don't get a balanced budget, as has been mentioned by Mr Povey, and we get a notification on the council, then there'll be some more serious cuts. So I think it's really important that actually we have a plan of action. Mr O'Reilly said, are these set in stone? These are working documents as we go forward. I'm really pleased Mr Harrison noticed, this is the first time we've sat here, three months before our budget envelope, having a discussion about what does the budget for next year look like before we actually vote on a budget. So I'm really pleased this is here, and I'm pleased with the work that's been done. We've got here, by coming up with an amount of money that we anticipate we're getting from government and where we are going forward, we've set budget envelopes for the individual departments, and we've come up with a plan of action, a strategy to deliver them. We're consulting on that, and all that working document will go forward as we go forward through this. Lastly, transformational. One thing we've always done in the past when we needed to make savings is just salami slice, I think was a phrase that Mary used, and we've used before, just cut bits off. This is, we're trying to be different, this is transformational, this is not looking at bricks and mortar, this is not looking at buildings, this is looking at how do we deliver services to come in the financial restraints we have? Don't ask the question about which building is going to be closed, ask the question, how are you going to deliver that service without that building in place? Why should we pay money for bricks and mortar, we should actually put the money into services? Yes, there will be some reduction in services as this moves around, but actually, we need to think about how we're delivering service and not get struck on bricks and mortar. Lastly, there's been a lot of conversation about culture. And yes, there's a lot of culture that needs to change within the county council, some of the officers at the front line, some of the management, but actually, us as members, we need to change our culture as well. We need to be really openly and thinking about a change of culture within ourselves, and how we look at this, and how we're delivering services, and the message we're giving to our residents, and try and be as upbeat and positive, and look for the positives within that, and how we're delivering these services throughout the county, and not get struck up on that building. Working with partners, yes, we've got a fantastic relationship with our partners, and I do disagree. We have, we do have some issues with perhaps delivery in the past, and we've not delivered all we said. I've sat in most of the boroughs and districts over the last year and received some of that. But I think the message is getting through, and we're now going into that next phase where we're working really well with a lot of our boroughs and districts, as well as other partners, please, and I think we've done some fantastic work with Health to bring them to the table, but the work is ongoing. Yes, we've got some bridges to get over, it's not all going to be smooth, but the work has started and will continue to start, and these working documents will form the basis of what we need to achieve over the next eighteen months.
Thank you. And lastly, Mr Oliver.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just start by picking up on Mr Spence's interest in suggestion of a coalition, a cabinet coalition? As we know, minority parties do well in coalitions. Look how the Liberal Democrat Party thrived since they came out of a coalition with the previous Conservative government. I suspect, actually, it was probably, he's the first person to declare for the leadership race, and actually, you need to see Rupert Meding to the back if you want an application This council, you members, the officers, have consulted extensively on the 2030 vision. That has involved all of the key stakeholders, many, many workshops, and a great deal of engagement and a great deal of enthusiasm from those organisations. To Mrs White's point, there has been a considerable degree of engagement with the voluntary, the charitable and the faith sectors, and I know from my conversations with them how much they're looking forward to moving forward into a new era, because we are about to move into a new era. We have done that in terms of the officer team, they've had a few months ahead start, and we're about to do that now at a political level. These strategies, as Colin Kemp has said, are strategies, this isn't about the detail. There are four strategic principles in there, I really, I would be astounded if anybody, any member in this council disagrees with any of those principles. And it may well be that there is a leap of faith as to whether this council could deliver those, but it is a leap that we have to take. I agree with John O'Reilly, as I always have done as his deputy in a previous life, that we do need structural change. We are all equal members, we are all elected to represent residents, and we have an equal right to contribute, but that contribution has to be constructive. There is many occasions when the opposition walk into this chamber and simply vote against a proposal that the Conservative group has put forward. Very easy, very easy to criticise. You know, the work needs to be done outside of this chamber, this isn't where it happens, it's in the select committees. That's where you've got the opportunity to help shape the agenda. There will be plenty of time to debate the detail. Today, it is simply about looking at that organisational strategy, the strategy around our people, the financial strategy. To confirm from my perspective, certainly my air, although as the lead member for people, these consultations are genuine, this is not a done deal. There will be consideration, full and proper consideration given to the results of those consultations, but don't be surprised, don't think that everybody is going to automatically, suggest that they're not suitable. Look at the way in which the, you know, the libraries, how those services will be delivered and so on. Things can be done in different ways, you know, and they must be done in some areas, you know, within the financial envelope that we have. So it's important that we take those consultations forward in an open and transparent way, and that we listen to what our residents have to say. So there will be plenty of time to have those debates, and I hope that the opposition will contribute to those in a positive and constructive way. But I would urge you today to support the direction of travel, to support the strategies, because that is what our residents expect, and that is what our residents deserve.
Leader, would you like to sum up?
Chairman and members, I would just like to say thank you to Mr Oliver for that last particular point about a positive vision for the future, which was picked up by a number of people, Dr Povey and others. This is about how do we do things differently? This is about how will we make it different? We were elected, all of us, at a mandate to make it different as councillors. That would be different for different people, for different issues in local areas. What happens in Farnham doesn't happen in Wallingham, or what happens at Wallingham doesn't happen in Farnham. So we have to look at things. We can't always come here with just one little place in mind, we have to open our eyes, open our eyes, open your ears, and read, and learn to what is we're trying to do here. It is so easy, Mr Chairman, for members to say it's too difficult. No, I don't want that. No, I don't want any change, let's not change anything, let's just do what we've done for years and years. That is not an option that the residents of Surrey want. The residents of Surrey want value for money, and they want services delivered as best they can. And as Mary Angel, Mary Lewis said, let's look elsewhere for new ideas. they can and as Mary Angel, Mary Lewis said, "Let's look elsewhere for new ideas." There are not all the new ideas that are here, so and as David Hill has done, "Look for ideas outside, that is making a difference already." So it's about how do we do things differently and how do we think of doing things differently? I love your idea by the way, but the reality is, it's not a starter. I'm sure that any of the candidates, I'm sure all the candidates here will be coming to you, Stephen, and asking you, "Which of your backbench members should come on my new cabinet?" I can see that happening tomorrow. But nothing wrong with trying. But the reality is, we are governed by our financial position and that's the principles that we have to take. We have to understand, we cannot deliver what we haven't got the money to deliver. The preliminary budget strategy, which is one of the very first conversations I had with the chief executive, I said, "I want to bring a different type of process for finance to the organisation." And we discussed it and we agreed we'd build a preliminary financial statement to this council now before the final one because it was important to set out some principles and the principles are laid out very clearly in there about budget envelopes, about officer taken responsibilities. And if you come to the cabinet meeting on the 27th, you will see a new financial regulations that's been written specifically for this point. We have to hold people accountable. The cabinet has to be held, individuals have to be held accountable. And we're very clear, it was really quite disappointing when I hear Mr, the green man, Mr Essex say, "You're doing nothing, you're doing nothing about looking at bringing children back here." Am I living in a cloud cuckoo land, Mr Chairman, or not? I know I've only got a few hours and you'll stop me talking again, but the reality is, we told the council, we are going to bring, we are going to create 350 places for SEND children. That has got to be one of the greatest things we can do here. We have to make sure we don't start sending them out anymore. It's a failure of previous and we have to say, "We will bring them back in here, into Surrey as best and as quick as we can." It will not be easy, but we all agreed we would do that, so please. In terms of consultations, oh dear, I do. Why are we consulting the people? I mean, what stupid idea was this that we would consult the people? Oh, sorry. Of course we should consult the people, of course we should ask their opinion, of course we should ask them, "Do we do things like we've done for the last 60 years with a library, with this and that?" No, I think what we need to do, we need to be brave, we need to have a different vision, we need to stop thinking about things in buildings and ask ourselves what is the right thing residents want. I suspect, Mr Chairman and members, I suspect if you talk to the residents, they'd like their services in a community hub locally and deliver lots of services from there so we know where to go. People need to know where to go for their services. Why should somebody walk around nine different buildings in a town like Farnham where we could have them in one place? That's my vision, that's the vision I want you all to take away. It's about an honest appraisal of what we need to do, it's about listening to the residents, letting the residents read the paper, let them digest it. We have got a very intelligent population in Surrey and I have absolute confidence that when they read the data, analyse it against the finance, they'll be able to do it. In terms of property, Mr Chairman, I'm sorry, I disagree with some people in this chamber. Buildings are buildings, you take the light off because I ain't going to finish yet. Buildings are buildings, sorry. Buildings, buildings are buildings, they're not delivering the service to our residents. Let's get that clear. What we actually need is officers on the front line dealing with staff, coming to them, helping them. If we have a building that is not productive, is not doing a job, we shouldn't have it. We should close it and do something with it and create a better idea for young people. I believe young people should have a house. I believe it's our duty to try and see how can we create it. And in item 11, when you read the Surrey Assets and Place Strategy, you'll see it's all there, how we're going to do it. And as for a workforce strategy, we can't do this on our own. We are the politicians, we're here to make decisions on policy and scrutiny. It is the officers who have to deliver our policy. Let's be absolutely clear and we need the best we can find in the business. We have a great team at the top, we need to get on with it. We have great partnerships. I know some of you think we haven't got partnerships, but Mrs White, you're living in cloud cuckoo land when you think we don't have good partnerships. Go along and talk to some other county. When I spent two and a half years as the County Council Chairman, I tell you one, I know what good partnership is between the districts and boroughs and counties. In Surrey, we have a good one, but we can be better. That's what I want us to be better.
Leader, could we have some concluding remarks?
I'm nearly finished, Chairman. So transformation, it's really important that we transform services. As has been discussed time and time again in this council chamber, we've said a transformation will be a one-year, a two-year, a three-year project. It's not going to happen overnight. And the role of scrutiny, Chairman, I must say this because it's really important, there are 67 members of this council who have a role in scrutiny. And when I see the head of Democratic Services sending out stuff, asking people to turn up for scrutiny training with the Public Scrutiny Board, and I see the response, let me say it publicly in front of every member of this chamber, I'm ashamed to say that it is a disgraceful return. We need more members to go on scrutiny and challenge the cabinet. So, Mr Chairman, this is about the future. This is about the future of our residents, what we always stood on the doorstep and asked people to vote for us. It's about how can we do things differently for residents? It's not how we can do things like we did 20, 30, 50 years ago, how we can do things in the future. It's the future is what matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. So members, the recommendations are set out on page 36, I'm going to take them individually. So all those in favour of A, put up your hand and press yes on the button in front of you. Thank you. Now the noes. Thank you. And abstentions? Thank you. All done? Thank you. 48 yes, 17 no, three abstentions. Item C, all those in favour, press yes on the button and put your hand up. Thank you. All those against? Press your button, put your hand up. Thank you. Any abstentions? Thank you, all done? 49 yes, 40 no, six abstentions. Item D, all those in favour, press yes and put your hand up. Thank you. All those against? Thank you. Any abstentions? Put your hand up and press the button. All done? 53 yes, 12 no, four abstentions. Thank you. Moving to noting, recommendations E and F. Thank you. That's the end of that item. Thank you. Item 10, Report from the Planning and Regulatory Committee on the Referred Motion. At the County Council meeting on 9th of October, we referred a motion to the Planning and Regulatory Committee for decision. Members are asked to note the report. Thank you. Item 11, Report of the Cabinet. I call the Leader to present the report of the meeting of the Cabinet held on 30th October 2018.
Chairman, I am pleased to hear the reception adoption of the meeting, the cabinet on the 30th of October and the Minister in the Agenda Pack's supplementary papers being out. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. I call paragraph A, Surrey Asset and Place Strategy. Are there any questions for the Cabinet Member? Yes, I call Mr Bottom.
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder if it would be possible for us to receive some assurances that the asset strategy board will have some cross-party representation and that where appropriate, divisional members will be consulted regarding the assets in their division. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'll take Mrs Watson now. Nope, she'll pass. Okay. Who's going to reply to that, please? Leader?
Chairman, yes, there is, those of us at the cabinet meeting will know that we have an independent panel that's been set up under Robert Napier and we do actually have Nick Darby and Ed, who's quite ill today, Rami, who are working with Robert Napier and the other people on the panel. They will bring the reports back and there will be work in relation to local areas. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So the Cabinet recommends that the County Council approve the programme budget of up to £500,000 to enable the development of the strategy and financial validation, this transformation expenditure to be funded from capital receipts flexibility. This figure includes a previous decision by council to allocate £275,000. Are we agreed? The motion is that the report of the meetings of the Cabinet held on 30th October 2018 therefore be adopted. Are we agreed? And the final item, 12, Cabinet Minutes, page 21 of the supplementary agenda. I have received no notification of any questions on the minutes, so the meeting ends at 1pm. Thank you.